Okay, there we go. Good afternoon. It's, I'd like to call to order the Salina City Commission Regular Meeting for February 24th, 2020. I would ask city staff for confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we'll have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Franz.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
For all those that are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, words and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the week of February 9th through 15th, 2020, as VITA Volunteers Week in the City of Salina, Brenda Gutierrez, Program Director for the Salina Area United Way will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for having us today. I'm Brenda Gutierrez with the Salina Area United Way. At the Salina Area United Way, we fight for the health, education, and financial stability of all people, and with me today, I have two of our volunteers, and I'm going to have them introduce themselves.
Hello. My name is Pedro Beltran, and I'm a senior at Kansas Western University, majoring in accounting and philosophy. This is my second year volunteering at VITA. The reason I am volunteering is because of my faith in Christ, the enjoyment I receive helping others, and to acquire greater experiences within my community and my field of study.
Good afternoon, y'all. My name is Ethan Rosine. I am currently a senior at Kansas Western University as well. I am a first-year volunteer with VITA, like, the VITA program. The reason that I did it was because I wanted to get hands-on experience and help people throughout our community.
I'll do the proclamation now. Whereas, volunteers train each year to participate in the IRS program known as VITA, which stands for Volunteer Income Tax Assistance, sponsored locally by the Salina Area United Way. And whereas, these volunteers throughout Kansas and the United States recognize a need and unselfishly donate their time, talents, and abilities to meet this need. And whereas, the VITA volunteers assist economically disadvantaged the elderly, the non-English-speaking, and the handicapped taxpayers throughout Kansas by providing free income tax assistance on the basic state and federal forms. And whereas, this year, 40 volunteers will operate one site in the City of Salina. During the three-month filing period, volunteers will prepare over 1,600 state and federal tax return and provide information and assistance to many more, all free of charge. Now therefore, I, Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor, the City of Salina, hereby declare the week of February 9th through the 15th as VITA Volunteer Week, and call upon all citizens to pay appropriate tribute to the VITA volunteers of our city. I witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Salina to be affixed this 24th day of February 2020. Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have multiple sites where you, people can go to, to get the service?
In Salina, we have one site. It's downtown Salina, 145B South Santa Fe.
Okay.
And we're open four days a week, and there's a couple of the morning hours and the afternoon, and then Saturday, to be able to meet people's schedules.
Is there somewhere someone can go to find out those hours?
Yes. Do you know the answer? Pop quiz.
I think it's on the website, if I remember correctly.
Yeah. But, um, the website, IRS.gov, and you can call our office at 785-827-1312.
That's what we needed. So, I have a proclamation for you, and gentlemen, thank you for your service and appreciate it, and good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, we will move into the Citizens Forum. This is a chance for those desiring to speak on an item which is not on the agenda may come forward, and your time is limited to five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyler Sartain, 233 North Kansas Avenue. I'd like to first thank Commissioner Franz over there. He hosted Coffee with the Commissioner, I believe it was Saturday, at Astra. That was a wonderful experience with myself and others in the community to discuss things that are going on in Salina, and we were very appreciative and look forward to the next meeting. One other ob, well, not thing on the agenda, but Junction City recently changed their ordinance for the repeal of their breed-specific legislation to allow the pit bull breed into their town with a few, kind of restrictions with two per, you know, housing spade, neuter, microchip with the city. Can't be a felon. So I would suggest that we just look at some of those things that they passed, and just hopefully we can integrate that with our ordinance. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Deborah Corrales, 124 East Charlotte. The first thing I want to hit on is that fatalities with dogs are incredibly rare. In the U.S., we have 320 million people and between 77 and 83 million dogs, so your chance of being killed by any type of dog in the U.S. on any given year is one in 10 million. Another study done by Victoria Voith of Western University, and I'll have a question for you guys at the end of this. In four different shelters of four different staff members identifying the primary breed of 30 dogs per shelter, a total of 16 staff and 120 dogs. As determined by DNA testing, 25 of the 120 dogs were true pit bulls and 95 were not pit bulls. Shelter staff identified 55 of the 120 were pit bulls, 30 more than identified as pit bulls by DNA testing, an error rate of approximately 33%. However, although the shelter staff identified more dogs as pit bulls than identified by DNA testing, they also misidentified 40 other breeds of the 120. Only 20 of the 55 dogs identified as pit bulls by shelter staff were identified as true pit bulls by DNA testing, a false positive rate of 25%. Shelter staff missed identifying five of the 25 dogs identified pit bulls by DNA testing, a false negative rate of approximately 4%. So my question is, if one of these dogs is misidentified by our shelter, and God forbid anything happen, is the city responsible because they banned this breed, but they yet missed one and let it get into the community?
Right. No, I don't believe that we are, for a couple of reasons. Just as a general premise, whether it's code enforcement or building inspection, the law recognizes that that is a general attempt. It's not, there's no expectation of perfection. And then with respect to the pit ball, pit bull cases that have already taken place, the courts openly acknowledge that there is some subjectivity to that assessment, and there isn't an expectation of perfection.
So you can just continually take dogs that just look like pit bull but don't DNA test as pit bull, and it's okay?
We, because of other concerns about DNA testing, we don't conduct DNA testing universally, so we don't find ourselves in a situation where we have conflicting results. But the court cases recognize that it is a subjective assessment of the traits of a dog that someone has to apply some discretion, and the courts have upheld that.
What accommodations do you provide in government meetings like this, translation of foreign languages? The Health Department is starting to require to have a translator, that somebody comes here and speaks a foreign language. Is the city going to be dressing that someday?
We have employees that we identify as being multilingual, and we give them incentive pay for that, and so if someone asks for those services, we try to connect them with someone that can provide that assistance. We don't have someone here at the meeting unless we have a request, but we do try to provide that accommodation.
Well, the fact that, in our discussion with Salina Media Connection for things that we would like to see, one of those was at least Spanish translation of the meeting, not live, but when it's put on tape. It's not something we're going to see in the next couple of months, but it is on the, on the foreseeable horizon.
Oh, yeah, you're going to see it tomorrow. You're going to see it next week. Because people are going to start coming in here and exercising their right of free speech. Some of these people are going to come in and start speaking in an American language. But my next concern is, it's in the news, what health preparations are we, are you even considering? What are we going to do with this flu virus that's coming? That ain't funny.
No, we.
Do you have any?
Our primary point of contact with that would be the Health Department.
I wouldn't worry so much about the one that's in the newspaper. Need to worry about the one that's already here every year. That one's killing more folks than the coronavirus right now. So just your typical, normal, safe hygiene.
But the coronavirus originated right here in the United States.
Oh, there, there's several viruses that don't have fancy names, that don't make it to the front page, but just wash your grandkids' hands.
Do we have any other, anyone else that would like to come forward during the Citizens Forum? If not, we'll move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time. Item 5.1.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing Authorizing the Completion of an Application to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment Regarding a Loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, Project Number 2997, 5.1A, Resolution Number 20-7795.
Okay, at this time, I will open up the public hearing, and we will have a staff report, followed by individuals from the public being able to weigh in on this. So, Martha.
I'm Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities for the City of Salina. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The staff report will be included in the public hearing power presentation, so I won't make you sit through it twice. That way, we'll try to be efficient. The public hearing is a requirement of the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, and the emphasis on it is to discuss the financial and environmental impacts of the proposed water distribution system improvements. So, to give you a little background on this project, in 2007, a water distribution system model was completed by PEC. The end result was capital improvement plans that identified over 20 years of water main replacement projects. In 2010, the City Commission approved $20 million for water main replacements. At that time, we anticipated about $4 million a year, and I'll give you a little more information on that as we move through the PowerPoint. And as we move forward in 2021, the idea is to use cash on hand out of our operating budget and to be at a rate of about $2 million annually. Our water distribution system is roughly 333 miles of water mains that are from 2-inch to 30-inch. The system gave life in the late 1800s, and the majority of the construction occurred between the 1900s and 1960s. And it was, the main was constructed with cast iron pipes. They're not cement lined. They have a very rough interior. It's a great surface for iron bacteria to attach, and tuberculosis takes place. This restricts the flow of the water in the pipe, and it also causes the water to be discolored. Out of that 333 miles, approximately 195 miles are cast iron mains. That's about 60%. And of that 195 miles, 133 miles are 6-inch or smaller cast iron mains. And they're typically the ones that give us the most problems, the 6-inch and smaller. Our project goals with replacing the cast iron mains are basically to improve water quality. Again, tuberculosis in the cast iron pipe causes color, taste, and odor issue in water mains, which we track from customer complaints. The cast iron pipe is brittle, and over time, it can fail and break. Another benefit of replacing the old cast iron pipe is it improves fire flows. We have some of our 6-inch water mains that have been restricted down to roughly about a 2-inch opening inside of that 6-inch pipe, which really reduces our ability to fight fires. And ultimately, this taste and odor and bacteria that can grow in the pipe can, we treat that with a chlorine flush once a year, and our idea is to keep a high chlorine residual and meet all of our regulatory requirements, which we are currently successful at doing. Got to get used to all these papers here. This is kind of a, a quick and dirty look at the water mains that we've replaced it over the last 10 years. Basically, started replacing mains about the end of 2010. This list includes mains that we've replaced to date, plus the project that we're proposing today. You can see that we've funded these with revenue bonds, operating fund, and the State Revolving Loan Fund. I included the interest rate only because currently the interest rate for the State Revolving Loan Fund is at 1.66%, which is, according to KDHE, the lowest rate they've seen in, in, in all of their memory, so very good interest rate. With this project, we will have spent over $20 million and completed about 37.6 miles of water main. Just for general reference, $1 million in debt would replace about $17 million of water mains, just to give you a feel for that. And when we look at the 37.6 miles over 10 years, that's roughly 3.76 miles or a little less than four miles a year. And based on this, the average cost is $540,000 a mile, times the miles per year worth that $2 million that we seem to think we can get done about every year, and that seems to be how it's worked out for us. And that's somewhat how we selected to move forward with the $2 million a year from our operating fund. Just seems to be where we end up. This map shows up better than I thought it might, but the, the red represents all of the areas that we've completed water main replacements in. The green represents the areas that we'll be replacing with this proposed project. You'll notice there's some concentrated areas in certain residential areas, and basically, those water mains were installed in the 50s and 60s, which, for whatever reason, seems to be the cast iron pipe that tends to give us the most problems. And when we talk about the most problems, we get water quality complaints from our customers. We log those, and we also water, log our water main breaks, and we take that information, transfer it onto Heat Map, and basically shows where our problems area are, and we try to work in that area to make improvements. So, it's kind of that. Our proposed loan amount is $4 million. Engineering was done in-house, included $250,000 contingency, so the proposed loan amount is $4,250,000. If we don't expand the total amount of the loan that's approved, then the rate schedule is reduced for the actual dollars we spent. We also have the ability, if we should choose to pay the loan off early, we can, as long as we're not under 10% or $50,000 of the project. So, we're not completely stuck with this. We have some flexibility in the future. Looked at a couple of financial, financing option. Option one, looked at the principal of $4,250,000 at an interest rate of 2.04%, which is the rate that the August refunding was accomplished at. Interest cost over 20 years is $968,000 or an annual payment of $261,000. With the State Revolving Loan Fund, principal of $4,250,000, and the interest rate that is currently at a 1.66%, the interest over the life of that 20-year loan is $780,000 or an annual payment of $252,000. So in a nutshell, using the State Revolving Loan Fund saves about $188,000 in interest over 20 years, and annually, that equates to $9,400 per year. A loan amount of $4,250,000 is included in the current 2020 to 2024 Water and Wastewater Study. The annual payment was calculated at $275,000, and that was including an interest rate of And at this time, we've submitted Part 1, which basically identifies the applicant, some project information, and financial information to KDHE, and we've also submitted Part 3, which is a capacity development survey that we're required to fill out every three years. It looks at how often have you had a drought or water restrictions, what's the condition of your system, how do you manage your system, financials. I think it's about 70-some questions, so it's fairly detailed. So we've submitted that to KDHE. The part that's remaining to complete this loan package is the environmental clearance package, which is a part of the public hearing requirements. On January 10th, we mailed out the environmental clearance documents to 12 agencies. Responses were due back February 10th. We received 10 back, no concerns. The two we haven't received is from the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the Kansas, Kansas Biological Survey. Typically, the Kansas Biological Survey does not reply back, and if we're in city limits, Department of Ag often doesn't reply back. So, I think we've received all we're going to hear from the environmental clearances. Assuming that it's approved to move forward with the loan, we'd complete the package and submit all the required documents first part of March, which would trigger KDHE to start putting the loan together. At this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about this information.
Do we need to open up the public first, since this is public hearing?
If you have any questions for staff, you're welcome to do that, and then, as long as we get public comment in before we close the hearing.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
Yes.
Anyone have a question?
With the 300-some miles, is the plan to, at some point, you focus just on those areas where you have a problem? You're not necessarily trying to replace every main in, in the city. It could be like an 80-year project.
Typically, working on the 6-inch water mains, because that seems to be our biggest problem, and in that 50s and 60s range. And as we work out of that area, whenever we do work in our system, we look to see what the condition inside the pipe was. The 12-inch pipe on Santa Fe, who'd been in there since late 1800s, 8-inch on the south end and early 1900s to the north, and it didn't have any growth inside of it. So, the, the age, age seems to make a difference. The older the pipe, seems to not have a problem. Some of the 50s and 60s is that. So, as we move out in these areas, we've identified where those areas are, and we're just working our way out of complaints and water main breaks, is what we hope for. But we may not ever replace all of it. It just depends upon, when do we finally move out of problem areas, to where we have no complaints or problems with broken mains, which.
So this is not an expense we should expect to see disappear from annual appropriations anytime soon?
No, in, in the original plan, it was about a 20-year plan, but that was taking a look at the $4 million. I think ultimately, it was 80 to 100 million dollars, depending upon how you work out. So that's why we've tried to concentrate on the 6-inch pipes and work our way out from the problem areas to see if we could eventually get to where we have no more tuberculosis inside the pipes, is our, our hope. We haven't got there yet, but we're hoping to work that way. You can see we're starting to kind of concentrate in areas to move out of that, those residential areas with the, the worst problems.
So it's my understanding that the older cast iron pipe does not show these difficulties?
Not in what we've seen to date.
Okay, even in the smaller diameters?
In the smaller diameters. We're not seeing as much of it.
Interesting. Okay. What about the pipe that is not cast iron? Can we expect, what, what is that, and can we expect anything with that?
The pipe that's after the cast iron, which is, some of it, depends, it's roughly in the 70s, and that goes to ductile iron pipe that's cement lined.
Okay.
And currently, the pipe that's being installed is PVC, polyamide chloride.
And a cement lined pipe does not have the same issue?
No, it's cement lined and has a surface inside of it that's more smoother than the old rough cast iron pipe. And we're not seeing those issues. Doesn't mean we don't have ductile iron pipe that breaks occasionally, just because of age, but as a rule, we're not seeing those kind of situations.
Ms. Ryan?
Nothing for you.
So I just wanted to confirm, so we're looking at probably like about 25 years to get all of the 6-inch diameter or smaller cast iron replaced, and up to maybe 40 years? And I've just ballparked it. So I mean, it's, it's a long, it's a long-term commitment.
It's a long-term project, and that's really why we moved away from debt financing. Otherwise, we'd have our debt each year would just keep growing and growing, so we tried to get to something that's reasonable and, and affordable in our system. But it's job security for a few years. I don't anticipate it being completed in 15 to 20 years, I think is a reasonable number out there, so.
This is a little off-topic, but I think it might be helpful just as a piece of information. On, on occasion, we get questioned about, primarily when we paved the street and then we have a water main break under the street shortly after we've paved it, why don't we, why don't we have the foresight to replace the water main? And Martha mentioned, we map it, we track it, we, we have heat maps, and so we are very deliberate about trying to coordinate the street work and look at the condition of the water main. When we're unlucky enough to have newly laid asphalt and a water main break, it's usually because we didn't see it coming. It was, it wasn't a problem spot prior to the street work, and it caught us by surprise. But we don't, as a matter of course, just replace every main under any street that's going to be paved, but we do try to be strategic, very strategic about it.
Looking at the condition and information we've gathered over time, but sometimes you don't know what you don't know. But we do our best, as Mike mentions, to try to stay ahead of that.
Well, it's my understanding that the brakes in the water line does not necessarily follow the condition of the line. There are lots of things that cause the soil to shift and may break reasonably new lines.
Yeah.
And it's not totally foreseeable. We're trying to just take what data we have and make sure we're taking that into account.
Cast iron pipe is not a flexible pipe. Probably find it hard to believe that ductile iron, as it's designed, the ductile portion of it is to have some ability to be flexible, PVC the same. So that aids a little bit in that temperature change in the ground and water that sometimes creates breaks. The other issue that creates breaks is if you have a weak spot in the pipe and there's a pressure surge for whatever reason, that can cause a problem in the pipe and, or a fire. Different things that move a lot of water in the line can create issues for us, so it's, it's not just as simple as how old's the pipe and what's the condition. There's many factors.
We're looking to borrow $4 million. Are we, but we're only going to do $2 million this year. Is that correct?
No, this project is a $4 million project.
You will get the $4 million, because I know before, we were always looking to do four, but we were only getting $2 million down a year, it seemed like.
Yeah, this project is for, we have designed and submitted our plans to KDHE, which we have to review no matter how we finance it. So our plans are two projects that are roughly $2 million apiece.
Then, one more question. From looking at your, your chart, I noticed in 2014, this, 14 to 16, State Revolving Fund was at 2.43%. Are those, do they have a prepayment penalty? Is there, can you refinance those?
No, you can refinance State Revolving Loan Fund. You can pay those off. Now, I have not proposed refinancing through them. I haven't talked to KDHE about refinancing a loan, but you could pay that off and do something different without any penalty.
I was thinking at an 80 basis point on $4 million, it might be worth looking into, so.
We have had refinancing conversations with bond counsel. We can double back and see if they took this into consideration, but.
Yeah, just, some other question. Any other questions? Any other comments? I guess we asked for public comment. Okay, with that, I will close the.
One.
Oh, sorry. Nora? Norah?
I think, Mayor, unless I missed it, did we formally open the public hearing?
Yes.
I apologize.
That's right.
On that note, on the water issue, I didn't want to bring it up on the forum because I didn't know if you wanted me to. Where are we at on this airbase cleaning up this money? Why don't you borrow $10 million and clean it up ourselves?
Okay, so I'll go ahead.
$10 million won't touch it. And just as part of the answer, we are in mediation with the federal government to identify a number that they can contribute to help us fund the cleanup. We're getting very close. But the intended outcome is a settlement between us and the federal government, where the federal government pays in, and we then have the authority to use those funds for the cleanup, with them contributing the bulk of that cost. But it's anywhere from 68 to 100 million dollars for the cleanup.
Some of us guys in here, we're going to get old and retire before you get that done.
Well, we are dealing with the federal government, so.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
If there's not any questions, I could present the options. If there's further questions, I'll be glad to take those. We've identified three options. The first is to approve Resolution Number 20-7795, authorizing the completion of an application to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment regarding a loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, Project Number 2997. Second option is to postpone consideration of Resolution Number 20-7795 to a specified date and time, and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments the City Commission would like to request for their further consideration. Third option would be to vote to deny Resolution Number 20-7795 and give further direction to staff. Staff recommends Option One.
Mayor Hoppick, I move to approve Resolution Number 20-7795, authorizing the completion of an application to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment regarding a loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, Project Number 2997.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7795. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5 to 0. Okay, next we have consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of February 10, 2020. Item 6.2, award contract for 2020 micro-surfacing, Project Number 20014, to Vance Brothers Incorporated of Kansas City, Missouri, in the amount of $574,888.37, with a $25,111.63 construction contingency. And Item 6.3, approve Resolution Number 20-7793, appointing members to various boards and commissions.
Mayor Hoppick, I would like to remove Items 6.2 and 6.3 if possible.
Okay, we will remove 6.2 and 6.3. Is Dan here, stack for 6.2?
I'll be taken out.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, and with that, I guess, can I...
procedurally, should we address 6.1 first?
I was just gonna...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I was just going to move that we approve the minutes of February 10, 2020, as presented.
Okay. Second.
Okay, that's fine. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from February 10. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that 6.1 is approved 5-0. Okay, now we can move on to 6.2.
And my question specifically on 6.2, I just had a question. Manholes were a big topic of discussion last year, the manhole adjustments in some of our resurfacing projects. And I just wanted to confirm, I wasn't quite sure, are we going to be adjusting the manholes as we complete these projects, or are they going to be a separate item that we deal with later in the year?
Yeah, it was a little confusing how we worded that. The manhole adjustments that are necessary to be within our policy for the projects that we're letting this year will be done with those projects. We do plan on bringing you a manhole replacement project very soon that will go back and the worst of the ones that we've done the last three years, replace those, so. The micro-surfacing, the milling inlay, the U-bass, the manholes that require adjustments will be done as part of those projects this year.
Great, that was...
The manhole project that we're going to let separately will make up for the last three years.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to confirm going forward, we were looking to the manhole covers, so thank you for that. I appreciate it. That's all I had.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have any comments from the public? Okay, if not, I'll bring it up back to the commission.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we award contract for 2020 micro-surfacing, Project Number 20014, to Vance Brothers Incorporated of Kansas City, in the amount of $574,888.37, with a $25,111.63 construction contingency.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award Project Number 20014. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That 6.2 is approved 5 to 0. Okay.
And then on Item 6.3, I felt it was important, at least from my perspective, to disclose and probably recuse myself from action, because I do have a family member. My mother-in-law has applied to be on the Community Art and Design Advisory Board, and I did just want to point out that, looking through the applications, there were two board openings, and there were only two applicants to fill those positions. So I just wanted to clarify that and recuse myself from 6.3.
Okay, and also, I wanted to make everyone aware that originally, on the resolution, there was an individual that was being appointed to the Arts and Humanities Commission, and we found out that we did not have an opening, so that has, that individual's been notified, and that name has been removed, so. Okay, any public comment? Okay, if not, ox.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 207793, appointing members to various boards and commissions.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7793. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 4 with 1 abstention?
4-0.
4-0, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to Administration, 7.1.
Item 7.1, Resolution Number 20-7801, setting the date for a public hearing to consider whether a dangerous structure at 320 East Bond Street shall be condemned and ordered repaired or demolished.
Hello, Commissioners. My name's Sean Pilcher. I'm building official for the city. Today, we're here to set a public hearing, a request, public hearing date for a dangerous structure located at 320 East Bond Street. Dangerous structures process is covered in KSA 121750. It provides authority for cities to require the repair or removal of dangerous structures by complying with the applicable statutory procedures. The whole process is broken up into two main steps. Step one is what we're doing today, is request for public hearing. Step two is to hold said public hearing. The next slide will talk about what we're doing today. This procedure is summarized as follows. The building official has to find the structure to be dangerous. That was done previously using criteria found in the state statute and in Salina Code, Chapter 31. There are eight conditions in there in Salina Code and in the state statute, which I won't get too deeply into today, but that's what I've used to make that determination. Number two is to request the commission to pass a resolution for the public hearing. Information given to the commission will include status and address of the property. You'll notice in your packets today that there are no pictures or any documentation or anything on the, on the structure or nature of the property whatsoever. That is going to be given to you at the public hearing in order to ensure procedural fairness and due process. At that time, the building official's evidence, as well as the identified parties, can speak to the matter all at the same time, and no one can make any, you know, prejudgments or anything like that. So we're keeping it just to the, kind of the title and status of the structure. If the resolution is passed today, the following timeline will take place. The first three items on the slide there are notification to the public and parties of interest. The February 28th and March 6th ones are publications in the newspaper, and the March 3rd is certified copies of the resolution will be sent to all the interested parties that are identified in the title report that we've done. And that brings us to April 6th, where we'll conduct the public hearing, consider passing a resolution to repair or demolish the structure located at 320 East Bond. When the public hearing does get here, if the commission deems the property dangerous, they'll adopt a resolution setting dates for commencement and completion for the repair or demolition of said property. Like I said, there'll be two dates on that resolution, one for them to get started, and the other one for the finish line, a deadline to finish up. If the commission deems the property is not dangerous, the address will be dealt with in typical property maintenance methods, usually by a compliance agreement we would agree with the property owner with, and they would make repairs, so on and so forth. And if that, if we can't make an agreement there, or they don't follow through with the compliance agreement, it'll, it could possibly refer to municipal court and be dealt with in that manner. As far as cost to the city, today, there will be none by passing this resolution. However, if the city is to perform the demolition, at the end of this process, the costs are billed to the property owner and payable within 30 days. If the owner fails to make payment, they will be assessed to the property on the land which the structure was located. So moving on to the building official's recommendation, the building official has determined that this structure is unsafe and dangerous. The address is 320 East Bond, describing the building as a single-family dwelling. There is one accessory structure on the property, a garage that is 20 feet by 30 feet, and the structure is vacant. In conclusion, staff identified the following alternatives for the City Commission. Number one, adopt Resolution Number 207801, setting April 6, 2020, as the public hearing date for the dangerous structure located at 320 East Bond. Number two, amend or adopt the resolution, setting an alternative date as the public hearing date for the dangerous structure. Number three, postpone the item with direction to staff regarding further information or action, or number four, decline to set a public hearing for this dangerous structure. Staff recommends Option Number One. And I'd be happy to listen, have any, answer any questions you might have, or if you'd like to move on, that'd be fine, too.
Any questions for staff? Do we have any comments from the public? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 207801, setting the date for the public hearing to consider whether a dangerous structure at 320 East Bond shall be condemned and ordered repaired and demolished, establishing a timeline that be set in motion and a date of April 6, 2020, for the public hearing.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7801. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That pass, 7.1 passes 5-0. Thank you, Sean. Okay, that moves us on to 7.2.
Item 7.2, Resolution Number 20-7809, providing for the acquisition of firefighting equipment, providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city of Salina, to pay for such equipment and authorization to publish the notice of intent.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance and Administration. During the approved 2020 to 2024 capital improvement program, we included a purchase of a Quint fire truck and a self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department, utilizing general obligation bonds paid by property tax. Today's action is considered the project authorization step of the CIP process. It authorizes the city to proceed with purchasing the equipment, states the city's intent to finance with general obligation bonds, and provides authority to publish a notice of intent to issue the bonds. The bonding authority for fire equipment falls under KSA 12-110C, which authorizes any city operating a fire department to acquire firefighting equipment utilizing general obligation bonds. However, it does require a notice of intent to be published in the local newspaper for two consecutive weeks and allow for a 60-day protest period. If during that 60 days, at least 5% of the qualified electors file a petition, the city would either have to hold an election to get voter approval to issue the bonds, not purchase the equipment, or find another funding source. The equipment being purchased under this authorization is a Quint fire truck, which is a dual-purpose engine and ladder truck. This particular Quint would replace a current 2,000, year 2,000 truck that is now in service. The 2,000 truck would be moved into reserves, and the current reserve would be sold. The estimated cost of the Quint is approximately $850,000. The other equipment covered under this authorization is self-contained breathing apparatus. This is apparatus that allows firefighters to operate within atmospheres that are considered dangerous to their life and health, including such things as fires or hazardous material incidents or confined spaces. Literally almost every day, this equipment is used. The current SCBA equipment, which while is still safe, is 15 years old and is behind by two upgrades. Each apparatus carries enough SCBAs for the crew with spare air cylinders for extended operations. The estimated cost for this equipment is $550,000. Bids for this equipment have gone out and are being evaluated by the fire department. The bids for the SCBA were open on January 30, and after consultation with the bidders, the low bid is only valid through March 31, 2020, and at that time will increase by 5% due to some manufacturer rebates that they were allowing us to have. Staff intends to bring that recommendation to city before that deadline in order to take advantage of those rebates. And in the event that a protest is issued on the bonds, staff will recommend an alternate funding source. This resolution does not commit the city to the purchase of the equipment or to the issuance of the bonds. The resolution just initiates the required process for the city to provide the authority at the appropriate time. As noted previously, the equipment was part of the 2020 through 2024 capital improvement program in the amounts of $850,000 and $550,000 respectively, with the intent to issue general obligation bonds to be paid by property tax. The options that we have before you tonight are to approve Resolution 20-7089, providing for project authorization for the acquisition of firefighting equipment at a cost not to exceed $1.4 million, providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city of Salina to pay for such equipment, and authorizing staff to publish the notice of intent. Option two is to approve the resolution with amendments as you deem appropriate. Option three is to postpone consideration of the amendment to a specific time and date, and provide us with further direction that you would like to have. Or option four is to deny the resolution, resulting in the city either not being able to move forward with the purchase of the equipment, or the need for the city to come up with an alternative to the general obligation bonds to pay the equipment. Staff recommends Option Number One. And I would stand for any questions.
Commissioners? What's the anticipated term on the bonds?
For this one, the SCBA, there's two different bonds. I just looked at that. 15 years, I think, was on one, and 10 years on the truck, or something like that. I can't remember. I just had it in the study session.
Just want to make sure not to extend them too far out.
Right.
If the scuba's run out in 15 years or 10 years, we probably ought to be ready to buy some more at that point.
Yep.
Yeah.
That was the same question I had.
That was the same question I had. And also in terms of like the Quint unit that we're going to, it says the, the active Quint, the 2,000 model is going to be held as a reserve for five years. And I guess my question is, at that point, I mean, is it, does it continue to be our reserve? Are we going to need to rotate the one we're purchasing?
From what I understand is they, they have one in operation, they have one in reserve, and then once they shift, once we go to purchase the next one, that one, they just move down through the line. So when the 2,000, we purchased the next one, the 2,000 one would be sold and the one we're buying today would be put in reserve.
Okay. Okay. I get, I was confused when it said, once replaced, the current active Quint 2,000 model will be held as a reserve for five years.
Yep.
But the new one would last a lot longer than that five years, though.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe it's a typo. Maybe it was.
Could be the reserve one for 15 years.
Yeah, stays the reserve.
I just wanted to make sure.
Do they have multiple ones like this and an older one, I guess?
That's not what I understand. I understand that they have one reserve, one active, and then that just, as we purchase a new one, that one just falls to the reserve. That's my understanding.
So, one of the things it says in the information memo is that the existing Quint is becoming difficult to repair because of availability of parts. So my question is, is that a problem if it's the one that's going to be held in reserve? Or would we be better served by keeping the older one in reserve if, if parts are still available for that one?
Something I can certainly ask.
That's probably a question for the chief, not, not for you, I realize that.
Yep.
Okay, is there any public comment? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Hoppick, I move we approve resolution number 20-7809, providing for project authorization for the acquisition of firefighting equipment at a cost not to exceed $1,400,000, providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city of Salina to pay for such equipment and authorizing staff to publish notice of intent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 20-7809. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 5-0. Okay, that moves us to 7.3.
Item 7.3, resolution number 20-7804, terminating the city of Salina's subscription recycling program.
Jim?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Jim Toich with Public Works. This blue sheet is for you to consider resolution 20-7804, terminating the city of Salina's subscription curbside recycling program. This topic was recently discussed in a study session on February 10, 2020. We would intend to provide notice to our customers with an effective date of March 31. One of the, one of the things that we wanted to do was allow the customers to keep their bins indefinitely if they wish to use them for purposes of recycling at the SDRC. Customers would be notified to call if they do not want their bins. Return bins would then be washed and taken to the SDRC and distributed amongst the customers that would be interested in having additional bins. We will notify the approximately 798 customers by letter if this resolution should be approved. The savings for this particular resolution would be the reduction of one truck and the reduction of one worker-driver position. And the options for this resolution include approving the resolution, approving the resolution with amendments, or postponing consideration of this resolution. And with that, I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
I have a comment more than a question, so go ahead with the questions first, yeah.
I, Jim, in terms of the, the reduction of the one truck and the one worker-driver, what does that look like for our net savings? I know you've probably presented it in the past, but do you have a ballpark?
It'll actually come up in another resolution tonight, but basically if, because, because there are four different resolutions and there are a, a whole list of considerations that affect cost, the end result of these resolutions would be that there would be, we, we are going to ask for a 50% fee increase based on inflation, but there would then be no adjustment.
50 cents.
50 cents. What did I say?
50%.
50 cents.
Let's wait back there.
Thank you. 50 cent increase and then no increase in 2021.
Right. And, and I get that. And I, what it is, is I had a question from a constituent today who, who asked specifically about what this component looks like as, as, as a savings. And I said, well, all the savings have been calculated into the whole in order to determine the rates, but I don't know that I, I could not give them like a specific, it's going to be $75,000 a year, $100,000 a year, whatever. And I thought maybe you might at least be able to ballpark that.
Yes. The, the trucks are approximately $145,000 and a worker-driver position is approximately $45,000. So 190,000 in total.
And the truck lasts, what, five years?
10.
10. So that's $14,000 a year.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, another way to look at it possibly is, we, we've estimated that the actual cost of, of providing the service is about $19.75 compared to, we're charging 5.50.
Yeah.
So, if you look at that difference over 800 customers over 12 months, by my math, that's about $137,000.
Yeah, which would correspond pretty closely to those.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. And that doesn't include the additional cost for the?
Yeah, the tipping fee for the recyclables.
Tipping fee now that was added, yeah.
Great, thank you.
And the position that will be eliminated in this transition, the employee will be moved over into a similar position, and there won't be a layoff involved, so.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other ques, or?
Comment more than a question. It's going to be a rather long comment.
Do we need to take a break first?
You won't need to take, you won't need to take a break before, but, but I, I do have a short video I'm going to show after, or Jacob's going to show for me, but after my comment.
Okay.
All right. Probably the worst thing to do is give somebody two weeks to think about something. It's like preparing for a football coach, getting an extra week to prepare for, for an opponent. And I was 4-1 on the short end the last time and maybe today. But with respect to curbside recycling, we are in fact making a budgetary decision. But I think we also ought to be making a community, identity, and strategic planning decision. One of our long-held tenets has been to care for our environment, our little piece of this planet. So if we stop curbside recycling, what are we saying to our community, our youth, and ourselves? Do we reduce consumption or throw away single-use items? Do we collect recyclables in one location only? Do we strive to reduce our carbon and plastic footprint? Do we compost? Do we really believe that first we reduce, reuse, recirculate, and then recycle what's left over? Have we aligned our recycling methodologies to the changes in the marketplace? As curbside recycling is withdrawn, I'm fearful that it will be difficult to restart. It's not just the physical act of picking up newspapers, plastic bottles, and cardboard. Doing this serves as a cornerstone of a change in the way we think about what we do with the stuff we buy or create, otherwise known as trash. The downtown recycling center, I must admit, is a very nice place and I appreciate it, a very nice place to drive through, very well-run. Optimal alignment of what we collect and how we collect it to what is done with it after it is collected might require flexibility in the structure and operations of the center to change with demand over time. If it is in the best interest to focus on fewer items, such as those that are easy to recycle and/or those with some financial payback, then we should be very good at collecting those items and those items with very little contamination. The other side of that approach is to then educate our community on how to reduce consumption of dead-end packaging, how to reuse items, and how to recirculate organic material into useful products. How recycling is collected affects the amount recycled. Those unable to drive or unable to lift, for example, have no easy solution for getting their recyclables to the downtown collection center. Those short on time may be discouraged by long lines if a lot of people do show up on a Saturday morning when they're off. While we grapple with how to collect our recyclables, there is still the issue of how much trash we make and how little we're willing to spend to make it disappear. The cost of getting rid of our trash should be no less than what we spend to deliver clean water or retrieve wastewater. So 50 cents increase, you know, 50% might actually be the more accurate relative value of what trash is doing, you know, to our whole planet. I mean, we probably need to spend more money to get rid of the trash than we do to bring in the clean stuff. Philosophically and ecologically, how long do we think we can get away with just burying it underground? Salina must seize this opportunity, be it today or tomorrow, with city government direction or not, to come to grip with one of our long-range health problems. The trash we throw away will come back to Honda's. Instead of cutting the service, we need to be working on expanding it to the entire city. I just, and this is only two and a half minutes, so don't get too comfortable in your seats. I came across this quite by accident, but didn't believe the words and I was listening to it on the radio.
One second.
Thank you.
I would just urge that if we take this step, that we move immediately and, you know, full speed ahead on the other end of the problem. And that really needs to be a major community effort, so we can deal with the problem before it gets to this stage. Thank you for your indulgence.
Something that, in your very eloquent remarks, something, a phrase struck me that we need to align our methodologies to the market conditions. And I think that was what I was alluding to at our last study session when we discussed this, and didn't say it nearly as eloquently as Dr. Davis did. But I don't know if that comes in terms of like, you know, if we, you know, continue and adapt what we have, if we stop, we'll stop what we have and take a look at the materials that there is a market for. But that's, that's, I just wanted to thank you for that, because you said a lot, a lot better than I could. And one last question, Jim. At that last study session, you said if every participant in the curbside recycling participated at like a $10 level, then the program would pay for itself essentially. Is that correct?
Right. So what we had proposed was shifting to 1,000 subscription recycling carts initially, and charging each customer $10. And from a financial standpoint, we would be able to, or from an operational standpoint, we would be able to expand the number of customers that we would be able to have to 2,000. The question to that, the missing math piece is, are there enough customers who are interested in paying the higher amount just to have a 95 gallon cart? It's prudent for me to mention again that we are down below 800 customers. We continue to see customers shifting from this methodology to the recycling center. And I would point out that there is a private entity currently in Salina that those customers could make arrangements for to have their recycling delivered to the recycling center if that's a service that they need physically or just because that's the way they would choose to do it. I don't know that there's a better time than right after that video, but I should mention that a House bill just left committee in Topeka that would basically make Kansas a preemption state, that cities would lose the ability to ban plastic bags and single-use plastics. That's, it's literally happening, you know, in the last few weeks, that that's all taking place. You may or may not be aware of it, but I think it's prudent to mention that at this point. Again, it's something that we could do. Whether or not there are actually enough customers to do that, though, is the real hard question. If we were not to do that, and we charged the remaining customers what it would cost to run the program by themselves, it would be over $20 per customer, and obviously that would not work.
Is that question one that could be added to the survey? And it's another agenda item further down, but if, you know, for the new carts, there's going to be a survey done early?
I would think that that would probably have to be a different survey, so that I would have to...
Because it's going to survey technically all of the citizens.
If this commission decided to not do what it, you know, what originally gave indication that it was leaning toward in the study session, then I would recommend that we go back to increase the number of carts by that extra thousand. But other than that, if we wanted to continue to just pursue that as a separate issue, I'm sure that we could work with the cart company. I would recommend that we would have to do a separate survey sooner rather than later in order to know if there's really that much interest. Current participation, it doesn't appear so.
The original survey that we had done by Fort H State, the $4 to $5 was the tipping point for interest in a curbside recycling program, and that was the target for the citywide that we were looking at.
Has the city...
The tipping point was actually $4.
Has the city signed on any new, kind of, for a while the program was closed. And has it been closed to new entrants?
It has. I will say two things. Not only has it been closed, but we have not actively advertised that program either. And certainly that would have an impact on the possible number of participants.
I'm sure that, I hope anyway, there'd be folks new to Salina who would have taken advantage of it had it been open. And it's not a nice way to say this, but, you know, natural attrition of our human bodies will lead to an eventual decrease in the number of people recycling.
We were accepting new customers up until the study session, when you indicated that we would not continue it, and that's the point where it was discontinuing.
We don't want to, we don't want to sign people up now, not knowing, you know, knowing that we're going to most likely terminate it. It wouldn't, would not make sense for us to continue to sign up.
It was my recollection, a couple of years ago, the program was closed to new subscriptions because it was at capacity, and we couldn't take any new ones. I never knew if it got opened up again.
We were maintaining a waiting list for a while.
Yeah, there was certainly a time when we were at capacity within the current system using the 18 gallon bins. The reason that I had suggested 95 gallon carts is because that would allow bi-weekly collection, and I could double the capacity of that route without additional person or additional truck.
And cardboard.
Yeah, and inclusion of cardboard. Correct.
Yeah, we'll hear in a second. Okay, do we have any other questions for...
I just have, I just have one last question. If, and obviously you can tell I'm waffling like crazy on this. I go back and forth on this all the time. It's really hard for me. So if we were to go with, you know, trying this and seeing if we could get 1,000 subscribers at $10 a household or whatever, what impact does that have then on, in terms of whatever we were going to use that truck for? I mean, does that mean that we're going to need to be purchasing another, another automated truck? I mean, because right now we've got, you know, the, further down on the agenda, we've got six new fully automated trucks to service, what, like the four automated routes?
Correct.
So would we, would we then be looking at adding another fully automated truck to the mix in order to have this route?
Yeah.
Yeah, if the question is whether we would buy an additional automated truck, right now the answer is definitely, I would say no, because that it certainly isn't calculated into the figure. We took, what would it take to sustain the current program? I would have to go back and look at it. It may be that we would have to talk to the truck companies about the number of trucks that we traded, for example, whether or not we would keep one of those semi-automateds, or whether we have enough within the fleet to bear the burden until we know the outcome, I guess.
And I think part of our issue when we were looking at this is we were concerned if we were even going to have an outlet for recycling at some point. I mean, you know, they've started charging us $65 a ton. That could go up significantly, or they could just say, we're done, and then we'd, we'd have... So I think that's one of the things, I know when we were looking at this, and I was one of them that was using the 19 gallon container since day one and now use the recycling center. But I think that was our big concern, is the fact that we'd spend a pretty substantial amount of capital outlay, and then all of a sudden, it would be sitting on the sidelines.
If the market is such that there are only two or three things that people will take, you take those. I mean, if it's going to end up in the landfill, no point in us shipping it and paying twice as much to put it in somebody else's landfill. But again, long range, you're working on reducing the presence of that stuff to begin with, but that's not an overnight solution. I realize that, but...
I guess the last point, just from an operational perspective, I'm an operations guy, that's what I do, it's what I love. I would say something to consider, and it's what I've tried to express through the whole thing, is let's focus on what we're good at. And you mentioned, you know, you commented to Sean about the facility. I think, I'm not saying that that facility cannot grow or change or be completely replaced with a different facility, but it is what we're good at. And I think the markets are such that I wouldn't be comfortable standing in front of you recommending that we make a large capital purchase for a program that is in decline from our customers. I think, I think the customers speak volumes every day because we're, we have about a 22% growth rate at the facility. And I think that's an indication of the direction that Salina is going. I would like to take advantage of improvements in the future. I think we can. I personally and professionally agree with everything that was in that video. But I think focusing on what we do best is something worth considering.
Thank you. And I have one more question, Jim.
Yes, sir.
And this, because I know we have quite a large amount of land for landfill. What is our life expectancy of our landfill?
It changes every year, but right now, approximately 150 years.
I would not have known to ask this next question myself, but have been educated. How much dirt do we have to cover? Because that, I've been told that's a shorter number of years.
Yes, sir. We have a shortfall of, I can't give you an exact figure, but it's several million cubic yards of soil. We are still probably 50 years from realizing that shortage. There's enough borrowed material that remains that it's probably a good 50 years before we would experience an actual shortage. It is not uncommon to, at that time, first of all, 50 years' worth of technology, landfills will continue to change, the regulations will change. But it's not uncommon in the industry today to, they call it mining a cell, and over time, the degradation of waste causes landfills to, you know, to sink or whatever in it. There is a store of soil that is then available to be taken out again and reused in the landfill elsewhere. It certainly is not enough to make up the entire deficit, but that, again, would probably push it by several more years. The other, the other ways that you deal with that typically is that's when cities start looking at purchasing additional property, or, you know, finding other ways to recover additional soils from the sector that we currently own.
Okay, my turn?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I agree with, much as has been said, I agree with a lot of what's said on the video. I think it does make sense, to quote Commissioner Hodges, I think, to align our methodology with the markets. In other words, if the markets aren't there for paper, let's not take paper. Let's focus on things. That way, we don't have to pay, Stutzman's nearly as much to deposit there. We don't have to make so many trips. There's lots of advantages to doing that. That being said, we have somewhere between 600 and 800 subscriptions now?
Current subscription, the last time I looked, it was 798.
Okay, so it's pretty close to 800.
Yes.
And the drive-through facility services the other 19,200 households?
Yes, sir.
So 800 additional would not overwhelm the drive-through facility?
By no means.
By no means. We have private entities, one or more in town, who do curbside recycling?
One that I am aware.
Okay. Is it possible that we could direct people who want curbside recycling to that entity instead of having two of us do the same thing?
I mean, I do within the legal power, I would, I would actually ask whether or not we would do that. We could certainly include that in the letter if we would be allowed to do that, but that's not a question for me to have the answer.
I'm just saying that it doesn't make to me a whole lot of sense to have multiple agencies doing the same thing.
Typically, we don't endorse a particular vendor, but in this instance, as an alternative to a service we're discontinuing, yeah, I think we could justify that.
Well, and there's one vendor. If there were multiple vendors, then I agree, we're walking on a little bit thinner ice.
So yes, we could then.
You know, my bottom line is that operating both a curbside collection program and a recycling center, a drive-through recycling center, makes no sense, one or the other. If we do curbside, then my view is it ought to be mandatory and universal, including customers of private haulers. That's the only way it makes sense. I think that's the only way it will ever come close to paying for itself at a reasonable fee, and we've never been able to take that step. We've been messing with this since, I don't know, 2006 or whenever it started. It was first a pilot program, and then it became a subscription program because we didn't have the fortitude to either force that implementation or to tell people, no, we're not going to do it anymore. So, and I think that particularly in today's markets, it doesn't make sense to try to establish mandatory universal recycling. And therefore, my conclusion is, is we ought to focus on the drive-through facility. That's what we do, and we ought to allow the private sector to provide the curbside pickup if there are vendors that will do that. I think that is kind of the best of both possible worlds, and it does get to the intent of the video. I do agree, we need to keep this issue in front of people, because like the man said, I do it myself, you know. All that being said, you know, I think that what we're trying to do here makes sense if we can condition that to try to encourage curbside programs through a private sector vendor if possible. And an almost entirely unrelated comment, and I don't have it with me, I was going to try to bring it with me, but we've talked about plastic bags. And I had a friend give me a plastic bag that was woven out of about 100 plastic bags, and it was turned into a reusable bag that you could use many, many times. Kind of a neat idea, actually, because it would, it would bring us closer to what we're trying to get to. The downside of it, of course, is it has to be hand-woven, and so I'm not sure that we have the labor necessary to hand-weave those things at an affordable cost, but I thought it was an interesting concept.
You're retired.
For me to do hand-weaving would not be affordable.
Do you know how many unique customers use the downtown recycling center? I know you can track how many visits, how many drop-offs, but short of, you know, capturing license plates or anything, do you have any idea of, or is there no real guess?
I think the closest that we could say is what is our weekly participation count? That's probably, I think that might be the closest that we could possibly guess, so average, weekly.
I doubt it's one guy coming through every day, but I mean, it's...
About 250 customers a day.
Wow. And again, to follow up on Commissioner Franz about being at capacity, right now, we're only open Wednesday through Saturday, so you could also open up Monday, Tuesday if the demand was there for it.
We have a meeting with the city manager, in fact, coming up to discuss ours. Sean has been tracking every half hour's participation since the opening of the facility, so we have very, very detailed data that we can use to try to make some of those operational decisions.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, we will open it up for public comment.
I apologize, had I realized that I should have...
Again, we'll remind everyone, we have three minutes. Yeah, state your name and address.
I live at 1314 Parkwood Drive. I had intended to bring an example of what we used for four years. We ran curbside in a 12-block area for four years. When the city came into it, just to be handed, my thought was, well, the system they have is not good, but surely they'll figure that out, I'll help them figure that out, and it'll improve. It did not. Still using the same little toy tub that you started out with. We use those too. We had some customers in the 12-block area who didn't generate a lot of recyclables, and for whatever reason, they liked that tub. Everyone else used a 48 gallon. We could have replaced all of the 18 gallon for the city program for under $15,000. Still could. And rather than just say it's a joke, well, pull the punchline, switch to something that works. The advantage to that is, of course, that, well, several advantages to it. People are going to bring their recycling out, many of them less often. What we averaged, we were, our neighborhood had 600, roughly 650 households. We knew exactly how many. We had everyone's name and address that we could come up with. We went door to door, which is, by the way, very doable. It's not. You just need a couple of people and have them every day go door to door. Before you know it, you've covered every house in Salina. The rhythm's too simple on that. But in any event, we, there were 650 households. We had about 160 households participating, and we averaged, we went every Saturday morning, just took us two or three hours, and we averaged about 80 stops. And had the city adopted our simple, straightforward, common sense approach, that truck, that same truck with one operator, could have handled 2,000 households. But that would assume that you didn't try to cover the entire town all at once, so that you spent half your time driving. You would start with representative neighborhoods, get at least, 25% is a really a nice participation rate, and then, as it works through, expand in each area, and eventually you're covering the whole town. Well, that was then, and this is now. We do have terrible markets now. We deserve them. It's amazing that we've lasted this long, the way we've treated Asians. First, the Chinese. We've sent them garbage forever.
Rich, we, you've gone your three minutes. Do you have a recommendation to us, I guess, to kind of wrap up where you're headed?
Well, what I'm saying here is that there are so many other things to consider. If you do want to be serious about reducing, the city offers drinking water, could offer some way with fountains available and get people to reuse a bottle. There's tremendous volume in water bottles, the 16-ounce water bottles, that is much diminished and practically gone away in some of the schools, including, of course, Sacred Heart.
And again, I think we're, we've talked about that, about educating and reusing, so...
But the water department could even place fountains. But in any event, mulch mowing, which years ago, there was a subsidy for mulch mowing. Mulch mowing is easier and better and quicker.
That's coming up in another subject, so we're talking recycling right now, so...
Well, but that, but that will reduce the trash load tremendously, because you can both mulch mow your grass and your leaves. There are just a number of simple things. If the city is looking to get serious about quality and quantity, then you don't mix the stuff and cram it together. If you're serious about reuse, you don't mash it together. A mash box doesn't reuse very well. So you have to come at it from an entirely different direction, which is what we've, I've known how to do, and it's just shame on me for decades, and done very little of, and that's what we're focusing on now. Jerry Nelson, who...
We need to allow someone else to speak. We've gone past your three minutes quite a bit.
Okay, I don't...
So we, and we understand exactly where you're coming from, and I think that's exactly what we've talked about as far as...
If you understood, you would have done something... If you understood, you would have done something long ago, but that's neither here nor there. You can believe you understand, and life will go on.
I don't believe we understand at all.
These markets, 1996 to 2000, we had markets very similar to these, and survived them, and it came up on the other side. This market will change as well, although.
And we are aware of that, and that's what we've also talked about, so.
Well, good, I'm glad you are. Then you'll, I'll leave town, and you guys will just do wonderful things. Be that as it may, we pretty much lost China as a customer, both for mixed plastic, well, did entirely, and mixed paper, so it shifted. India, in the last year, has taken about 40% of all exported mixed paper has gone to India. Now, they've said enough of this nonsense, that's.
And that's fine, okay, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, so we can move on, okay?
Well, if you'd like to offer, or see that the curbside pickup is offered, Jerry Nelson can expand to some extent. I've talked with him.
And that's the gentleman, I believe, we have his name, and we will, we'll try to lead people in that direction, so.
To where it'll be mixed, or if you're really wanting to be helpful, not just go through the motions, he picks it up separated, and we're gearing around to where we'll be able to take virtually everything separated. There are markets for.
Okay, we understand, okay, okay.
Well, if you understand, then you can have it.
Well, Mr. Nelson's going to.
Hi, this is really silly.
Thank you. Is there, I think there's some other people would like to speak.
David Norland, 608 East Republic. You know, I have the greatest respect for people in this room, Ken, for doing the images recycled for so long, and this is really intended respectfully, but to Commissioner Davis for bringing some soul into this discussion, by God, and I'm going to hear Taj Mahal in honor of that, or respect. And Mr. Toich for his really in-depth research, I don't think you can beat that. So, we're here at a really difficult, critical time, and I'm respectful of all positions in that way. One thing, I think, there are several things that need to be said in terms of overall background. The petroleum industry, when they were kicking out plastic in the last decade particularly, right and left, beginning with water bottles, et cetera, huge increase in the amount of plastic we're using, to the point that particulate plastic is even in the air in the Himalayas. What was their solution to that? It was to promote recycling. Well, okay, so far, so good. I think that the idea of the city promoting and putting muscle behind recycling in some fashion, whether private or otherwise, is really important. When the Waste Committee was talking about this, I think, I was asking Jim about what the exact figure was, somewhere between $2 and $4, if the city were to say, every customer of the city will pay a certain fee toward recycling, and you can make use of it or not, between $2 and $4 bucks, but let's say it's $2. I like that figure. That would be a 10% or 12% not 50% increase, and is that too high a price to pay for keeping the stuff out of our? I don't think it's too high a price to pay. We're kicking the can and the rest of recyclables down the road, and I understand where we are from an economic perspective. What can we do about that? We don't know what's going to happen, to your point, Mr. Hoppick, about what happens to the markets, we don't know. And perhaps that's the best we can do, is to kick that can down the road. But there's one really important point I wanted to say, and I think I could do it in 50 seconds. Jim mentioned that this, the ban, the bag ban bill was kicked out of committee in the Kansas Legislature. What some may not know is that in that committee, the, there were several senators who were at the funeral of Greg Lewis from St. John's, who was a previous senator. So they were absent in respect for that, and what happened was that in their absence, the leadership of the Kansas Ledge, as I like to call them, came in and pushed that bill through. It is a bill that is a model bill by the American Legislative Exchange Council, or Alec. It is a model bill that's been through, put through other states. It was rammed through against the wishes of the majority, even of that committee, and that's the kind of manipulation and thuggery that you have going on to promote unsustainable practices. I think we have to factor that in, in terms of decision, and I thank you for being responsible for making that decision, it's a hard one.
It is, thank you. Do we have any other comments from the public? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back up here to the commission for any other comments. Anyone else? Commissioner Ryan, or?
Well, it's regrettable that we're at this place, but not to panic, we have 150 years in our landfill, and I believe that everybody is well-intentioned about dealing with this recycling problem and to reuse. I mean, I believe in human nature, and that we're going to, someday, it might not be right on the horizon, it might not be right in front of us, but we're going to get the solution to this problem, but what we have before us today, I believe, is the best solution at this point in time. If nobody else has any comments, Mayor, I would move that we approve Resolution Number 207804, terminating the City of Salina's subscription recycling program.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7804. All those in.
Oh, could I just say, I'm sorry. Commissioner Ryan went really fast into that, into that motion, and I, but no, I just wanted to say one final thing, and I think it speaks to what Mr. Ritz was talking about. I think what it comes down to, for me, is we're continuing, if we were to continue this curbside recycling, as it's been, as it's being done now and as it's being proposed in the future, it's not a sustainable model. From talking to people, I understand, we need to separate, we need to capitalize on the things that we can capitalize on, and unfortunately, I, you know, this just isn't, this just isn't working, and I think ultimately, we're going to have some decisions to make too, about how we want to structure our drive-through recycling center in terms of being able to respond to the model that has worked for you, so, thank you.
Would like to say, though, the reason it didn't sustain itself was because of the artificially low cost, the small number of participants, and lack of this being a priority, the way the city sanitation department operates, it was not the major part of its operating model. You know, if you indeed do charge everybody $2 a month, you know, and we really have to start looking at how much trash we're making, and we think nothing of paying more for clean water, because nobody wants to be without clean water coming through the pipe. But the trash going out is probably a bigger problem. We're going to have to, at some point, pay a lot more to get rid of what we're making. So, the current model was unsustainable, but it was a self-fulfilling prophecy, the way it was set up, it was not going to sustain itself financially.
Okay, one more comment. I subscribe to the curbside service, and I use it daily, and my trash output has gone from a half or two-thirds of a 95-gallon container to maybe one bag in the bottom, maybe two, so it does work. I personally prefer curbside service to having to drive down to the recycling center. When it's removed, I'll probably go down there, but I will probably presort and select the items I bring down there, because I am convinced that most of the paper products we put in those curbside bins now end up in a landfill somewhere. There's no other place to put them. Same with the plastic. But glass and metal, I think, are probably still viable items, and I don't like the idea of paying twice what it costs us locally to dispose of that stuff, to just have it go to some other landfill, so, for whatever that's worth. I like the curbside model if it's done, like I said, universally.
Well, I guess since everybody else has commented, I might as well, so. You know, I do believe that, you know, education is still a big part of this, and I do think this is a subject that's going to continue to evolve as we talk about whether it's cans or glass that we can recycle, and I just think as a community, we need to keep our eye on that. Again, at this point, I think we have to vote on how we feel, and then we'll just address the item as recycling as we move forward. So, again, we have on, before us, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20-7804, terminating the City of Salina's subscription curbside recycling program. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes four to one. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. I know, to follow up, somebody else, it's not an easy subject, and appreciate all the input, so. Okay, we'll move on to 7.4.
Item 7.4, Resolution Number 20-7805, directing staff to provide the required 90-day notice and terminate the current agreement with Kanza Organics for processing yard waste for the City of Salina.
Unfortunately, it doesn't get any easier on the next one. So, this item is for you to consider Resolution 207805, to allow staff to provide a 90-day notice to terminate the agreement with Kanza Organics. This was also discussed in the recent study session on February 10th. This has been discussed in multiple study sessions, and we've communicated the inability of staff to have the number of staff and the necessary staff to sustain this program. The commission had previously authorized staff to co-mingle yard waste with the refuse in 2019. I would point out that the recoverable cost of the yard waste program is about $357,000, which equates to about $2 per customer. So as we're developing this system, those are the figures for this one. In 2019, we took about 85 tons of material to Kanza Organics. That material was from the street department in our fall leaf collection program. I would like to be able to still negotiate a new contract with Kanza Organics in the future, so that I can sustain the fall leaf collection program. Whether or not we are successful with doing that or not, we will, staff still recommends that we continue the fall leaf collection program, and we will absolutely find use for it and turn it into soil at the landfill, because we just talked about that we need that soil. Yard waste was a significant item in our operating budget, and the elimination of yard waste allows us to implement the elements of the system as we've described in the previous study sessions. The actual tonnages for yard waste and fall leaf collection were provided in your handouts, and as you can see, the tonnages have steadily declined, particularly in the last several years. With this topic, as, like the previous topic, the options consist of approving the resolution, approving the resolution with amendments, postponing consideration of the resolution, and directing staff to do something else. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
What happens to the yard waste that's taken to the landfill? That's a free drop-off, correct?
So.
That's free?
Okay, so.
Maybe not.
Two different things. When we're talking about.
I'm sorry, when a private citizen just drives up in their own truck and brings it, yeah.
Yes, but when we're talking about yard waste, we're basically talking about green waste, so we're talking about bush cuttings and grass from people's yards and that kind of material. We do not accept that in a separate area at the landfill at this time. What we take at the landfill, free to customers, as you mentioned, is brown waste, which is, you know, trees that they've cut down or large things that previously had not been able to be disposed of through the yard waste program. For many years, the yard waste program had a size restriction that the brown material, the wood itself, had to be smaller than a number-two pencil, which certainly didn't aid in making that a popular program. But that is free to, taking that material to the landfill is free to residents, and we only charge half-price to commercial companies for dropping off that material at the landfill. If you ask me what happens to the grass and the yard waste that goes to the landfill, it is literally what I just said. It will be, it will be, I hate the term yard waste, because it's not representative of what it is. It's an organic material that is going to return to its natural state. One of the things that Jim and I had recently talked about is, that a lot of people don't understand, is yard waste, if it is collected in any form, whether it's for composting or otherwise, still creates methane. At least at the landfill, if I have yard waste, I am able to have control over how that methane production is dealt with. The very end of it is that anything that we put into the landfill, which throughout the existence of the yard waste program, we've always had yard waste as part of trash, that is how some people dispose of their yard waste, it ultimately becomes soil. You know, it's 85% water, and the rest ultimately becomes soil, which is beneficial to me as a landfill user, and I think it is the definition of green, to be honest.
So, is the brown waste that the landfill exists, is that the same material that has been going to?
To a very, very limited degree. Up until recently, we had that size restriction imposed, and it wasn't until recently that he had lifted that size restriction and allowed us to take something greater than a number-two pencil. So primarily, what we took them was grass and leaves. Is that, is there anything you'd add to that, Shaun?
Okay, and a private citizen was not able to just take it out to him, sort of, under the city contract?
I live in the city, I'm with that truck. I don't know what his business model is, or, you know, whether he charges someone or whether they're allowed to dispose of yard waste for free. I don't know the answer to that.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner, just?
Nothing here.
So then, if you use this for the leaf collection, or if we had a big flood, you know, anything where thousands of tree limbs are on the ground, you would just have to set up a one-time contract with them to?
We would have to first develop the plan that we were going to deal with it based on the quantity of waste. The last time we did that as a city effort, I believe, was 2008. We actually built four fire pits on Markley Road, and over a long period of time, burned a great deal of that material. The material that we could, that we saw as reusable, we hired a contractor with an extraordinarily large grinding machine, and we ground it, turned it into mulch, and took it to the landfill and repurposed it.
And we've actually done that more.
And offered it to the public as well.
We had a smaller incident of that 18 months ago?
Yeah.
Where we had an ice storm, and we took it to East Crawford and tub-ground it.
One thing you kind of, is it, one thing that just prompted me remembering something here is, if we do continue with the leaf programs, a comment that I have heard from a lot of people about yard waste is that our leaf pickup time maybe doesn't coincide with the bulk of the leaves falling, and so, like we pick it up on the early side, and I don't know if there was a reason for that timing, or maybe if that's. for that timing or maybe if that's something that we could take another look at and make, make sure that we're picking up at the, at the optimal, optimum time.
We're, we're certainly always willing to look at, at any operational procedure that we have. I can tell you the reasoning behind the program is so that we could get the fall leaf material as best as possible, collected before winter season sets in and we get a lot of snow. The weather patterns are currently changing and we are seeing leaves holding on a little bit longer. A few years ago, we deliberately changed how we did fall leaf collection by, we used to, when I first arrived at the city, collect in the north section of town first. So, we actually flipped the map so that we would collect from the south first because there's fewer trees and it would, it would allow another month to pass before we got into the northern section of Salina where the bulk of our, our trees exist. So, we, we are certainly always willing to look at that. Now, every year in my news release, I, I point out to the public that we only do one round of pickup. But I also, in that same email, say, "Call us, give us your name and number if your leaves haven't fell and let us know your address and we will send that truck by." It is very common if weather allows past Christmas that we are still picking up leaves and gladly do so because it keeps it out of our stormwater system, which we are also responsible for. And we don't, we don't want to mess that up. So, we, it's, it's in our best interest to get those leaves. We try to work with the public as best we can. We're always open to new ideas. But right now, we have that, that very short window where fall leaves start and winter, when the snows come, it makes collection of leaves extremely difficult.
Well, thank you, thank you for that because I like to think that I, I read all the news releases that come out, but obviously I didn't pay close enough attention to that and that's a really helpful suggestion that I can pass along to people, so thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, if not, we'll open it up for public comment.
We have been working with KDHE, where we've moved, we've got acreage, about getting some composting going and doing some novel things, but also just the everyday, ordinary greens and browns mixed and they turn to organic matter to return to the soil. The, the methane issue, I would suggest you visit with Emory Weens, who is the compost guy at KDHE and works with composters all over the state. Larger-scale compost operations have to have permits and are inspected and what have you. And there's some pretty good-sized compost operations that, when we've had works conferences in the towns where they were, that's been a field trip. I've been on many of them. I've, the works conference, this will be the 26th Annual Works Conference coming up here in March. So, anyway, you really should bring him. He's got no dog in the fight, but he runs the fights, so you'll find that very, very helpful. So, anyhow, that, as I say, we're, we're moving in that direction because to do discard disposal properly, you have to have three things. You need to pick up what's recyclable, you need to pick up what's compostable or help people compost it on, at their homestead, and then what's left, the trash is just a residue, which is, is why I've said all along, we're looking at it backwards, spending time, effort and money on big trucks for big amounts of trash, when if you do what we can so readily do, you'll have small amounts of trash. So, anyway, but, but he's, he, his predecessor, who was there for like 20-some years, was also more than willing, very helpful. They're not gotcha guys, they're, what can we do to help you so it will work and so you'll meet requirements? And I, I know he'd be more than happy to come to a steady session or to the, to the Commission and go through anything and everything that you might want to know, so.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Dave in New Orleans, 608 East Republic. Can I ask an abatement on the three minutes for just a second to ask Jim a clarifying question? Jim, so, can you, can you specify, I guess, there, is the seasonal nature of trash pickup one of the things that makes it less feasible to, to charge? If we were to sustain and keep going a yard waste system with the existing yard carts, is that part of the reason it's not affordable? Can you comment on that a little bit? I'd yield a podium.
I don't, I don't know if I completely understand your question.
Does that contribute to its lack of affordability? Because you don't have a worker assigned all the year round, it's just a seasonal...
Well, one of the, here's, here's the way I, I think I can explain it. So, whenever the, the owner of Kanza Organics comes and speaks to you, I stood in the last study session with him and said, "I agree with everything Roger just said. He's right. That's, that's exactly right." The, 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 the cost of the, of the program depends on how much tonnage you collect. And so, if you're, if the tonnage you collect is very high, then the cost per ton is, is lowered, it, it becomes more operationally feasible to run a program like that. Unfortunately, and I don't think it is just staffing, I think in the last several years, staffing has been the primary contributor. But earlier this evening or this afternoon, Martha spoke about periods of water shortage. I, I know from the time that I've been with the city, there were several years that we saw a significant decline in the amount of yard waste collected was in those same years during those drought periods. I know from being, you know, from owning property, that I was mowing less and, and taking, taking in less material and providing less material for Kanza Organics to use. I think it's to the, it just became to the point where it was not sustainable based on the tonnage that we were collecting and the cost of operating that, that system. The business plan broke out the entire cost and for, for that entire program and it, it just got to the point where we thought there are, it kind of goes back to what I said before, let's focus on what we do well and let's do that as, as best we can. And I can't say enough, because I've also stood in agreement with, with Ken and many of the things that he said, and recycling is the last end of the, the part, if, if you're relying on recycling, you're doing something wrong. And a lot of times, these programs are designed so that we think we need big numbers there, but what we really need is to get people to stop bringing us yard waste because it's good organic material that belongs to the earth, put it back into the earth. So, the, the best way for me to make yard waste sustainable is to get people to stop collecting it and, and then asking me to transport it and then paying a company to do something with it. It's, it's a, a green, organic material that is easily put back into the earth and I, I think our, our focus needs to be more on that kind of response with a lot of these topics. I probably didn't answer your question, but it's about the best I could do.
No, that's helpful. So, that really does help for my comments. I'm speaking as, as a user, yard waste user, not any other kind of user. So, I had a conversation with a son-in-law who has, lives in Nebraska, has cool-seasoned grasses, lets all the stuff sink back into the lawn and I appreciate Ken, your comment. That's probably what I should do to be more responsible, but God help me, I'm a little more irresponsible than that. And it really helps, again, to have a city that is picking up the yard waste. I really appreciated that. And most recently, when, you know, I would get these notices too about these two-inch branches, I'd say, "What are you talking about? You know, I, I gotta hack this stuff up." In some ways, it is kind of an industrial operation that needs that kind of attention and care. And if we had, continue to have a place where we could go for compost, where the soil was usable to haul back out to your garden rather than being in the landfill, and one quick comment is, I don't know if Jim's saying this, but does that contribute to dirt that you don't have to haul back in later on to fill in the landfill? Maybe so. But from a user point of view, having that time when Kanza was taking the larger branches and I could haul it all to a yard cart, that was a huge help for me because trying to manage all that limbs, branches, whatever came in, and there's a tremendous amount of waste. So, y'all know this already, I sent you an email, so you know what I'm going to say about that. But when you put that stuff in the landfill, you are, back to the, the air we have to breathe, we are then collectively contributing to CO2 that's going to mean we have less breathable air later on. So, I think this is one thing, it, this is a hill that we should die on, but hopefully not die on. I think that, that we should continue the yard waste program and find some way to get a contract so that it's hauled off in a way that will make it easier for citizens to dispose of the yard waste and encourage them not to when necessary. I think I did that in two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Could I, I have a suggestion to you. The Parks Department has a, a good chipper, an expensive chipper, and you've probably seen that the contractors for what was Westars, now Evergy or whatever, a sploons trims trees, chips them on the spot and could offer people that chip as mulch. They end up having to haul it somewhere because they haven't done that. But, but that's an approach that we will take if, if or as we institute curbside, to have a chipper and periodically, and just let people know when you're coming around, put it in your parking area, we'll chip it up, you can have it back, you know what it is then. If, if you don't have a, a disease issue, you won't inherit one. If you don't want it, we'll take it and, and either offer it as mulch or compost it because it composts very nicely and, but the leaves and grass by and large, and some of the commercial mowers are using mulch mowers now, which it's sure easier, lazy as I am, that's what you do, is you mulch anything you can on the spot. Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the Commission. Are there any other comments?
This, just, just real quickly, this is even harder than the recycling because we actually have a market for this. I mean, there's a place that will take it. And I think that, you know, with, with the recycling, obviously the markets are cyclical, but we're in a down cycle right now for those. But this one's harder for me because we do have a place that'll process it and I think that with the methane that it, I understand that it does create soil, but it's also going to hasten our need for an expensive methane, is, I mean, we're, we're going to, we're going to need to then invest in the methane or technology for remediating that. And that's not a cheap...
I'm the guy with a lot of bad news and I can stand here today and give you more. In the next, in the next five to 10...
No, no, that's okay. You've given us enough bad news.
In the next five to 10 years, we will have to build a system at the landfill that captures methane and then either burns it off or create a second use for that methane. That is coming whether or not yard waste is put in there and yard waste is such a small percentage. Take, take the average of about 1,500 tons divided by the 85,000 tons that we put into the landfill and you'll see just how small that is. I think I did a calculation once and it would, the, the, over the, in the life of the landfill, we would decree, we would decree, and we collected all the yard waste from all the customers and all of it went to the landfill, we would add about a year, we would take away about a year of the life cycle of the landfill. It is a pretty insignificant amount in terms of the total tonnage that the landfill takes in. And unfortunately, we are going to build that system in the next five to 10 years and the reason it's five-year increments is because that report that we're required to submit to the KDHE is a five, is on a five-year cycle. So, we will know this next five-year cycle. The engineers do not believe we're going to hit it, but we will be close. We will hit it by the next time that we do that report. And then you have about 30 months to build this system, which is several million dollars that, that we'll have to spend to put in that system.
But Jim, isn't that more methane generating than the other trash to the landfill?
Okay.
I mean, yes, it is.
But not significant?
The difference is the amount of material that you're putting in the landfill. That's, I mean, that's the significance of it. And we can't lose sight of, we've always had yard waste going to the landfill. We always have. It, it is part of the trash that Sean collects every day on his routes. Those guys are collecting yard waste mixed in with the trash that becomes, that goes into the landfill. All I can say is if it goes into the landfill, I'm controlling the leachate, ultimately I will control the methane and I would rather encourage people not to collect it because there is a carbon footprint associated with collecting it and processing it as well.
Again, educating individuals to mulch?
Yes.
I'm looking to the guy behind you there, Dave. Mulch?
It isn't just yard, yard trimmings though. Food waste in a landfill. You get the methane from denying oxygen. If you've got oxygen, you'll get very little methane, you'll get carbon dioxide, which will get very little methane, is my understanding. And, and that's why the permafrost thawing is, is, that's where the real methane issue is.
Well, I don't think Kanza takes food waste, do they?
They could, they could. I've talked to Roger, they could. We will. That's why, that's, and, and that's a very significant drop in tonnage because food waste is mostly water. But that also includes soil paper, napkins and that sort of thing.
It sounds like we'll be talking to you in the future when you get all this set up. It sounds like you've got some opportunities.
If we can, if we can get rolling, and it looks like we, we, we can, if I can get my cement mixer down from Minnesota, but that's another story, it's kind of a fun one. But, yeah, then we will definitely take food scraps, yard stuff and soil paper. There's all kinds of soil paper that, that should be composted. It screws up recycling. It's part of why the Chinese, because we sent them all kinds of, of garbage, they compost beautifully. So, anyway.
Okay. Bring it back up here.
Mr. Mayor, are you ready for a, a motion?
Well, we made it. We'll try.
Have we already made the motion?
No.
Okay. Well, Mayor Hoppick, I move we approve Resolution Number 20-7805 directing staff to provide the required 90-day notice and terminate the current agreement with Kanza Organics for processing yard waste for the City of Salina.
I guess I'll second. Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve Resolution Number 20-7805 directing staff to provide the required 90-day notice to Kanza. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that passes three to two. Okay, that leads us to 7.5.
Item 7.5, Resolution Number 20-7808, establishing sanitation refuse collection and Salina drive-through recycling center rates effective as of first billing cycle beginning April 1, 2020, not previously approved in the latest comprehensive fee schedule of the City of Salina.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is to consider 207808. These fees, as just mentioned, were, were not adjusted with the other comprehensive fees that took place in August of 2019. This topic was also recently discussed in the February 10th study session. For the year 2020, we are asking for a 3.1% inflationary adjustment to the refuse fees. It's worth noting that Stutzman's Refuse, where our MRF is in North Hutch, began charging $65 a ton on July 1st of 2020. $65 a ton on July 1 of 2019. We have considered a number of different options. However, staff has concluded with those options that Stutzman still remains the most cost-effective and workable solution at this time. With that, we recommend the need to adjust fees to help pay this additional cost to our operational budget. The fees were rounded to $1.25 for the SDRC. We believe it is important, especially with all the conversation this evening about what we might do in terms of future recycling endeavors, inflationary adjustments, as I've mentioned, and the possibility of increased costs, to create a fund end balance for the SDRC. When we first developed this system, my end balance target was about a dollar at the end of the year. That's how much money we saw, you know, left over after operational expenses. I would like to create enough fund balance to be able to make decisions for future decisions that we need to consider. It's also worth noting that other cities in our region are paying in excess of $120 a ton for that, for this very same service. One of the other fees on here is a waste tire fee. The best way to describe it is, it's a children's sandbox-sized tire. It's a very large, heavy equipment tire. This fee is currently charged at the landfill. We do not have a corresponding fee for our sanitation employees that have to collect this tire. The difference between those fees is $1.25 to cover the cost to collect the tire, haul the tire to the landfill, stack the tire, and then drive back to Salina. Obviously, we're gonna maximize our load and take more than one tire, but it's, all of the fees for refuse are based on $1.25 for the service of whatever it is that we're removing. This particular tire was added to the landfill, it was not added to sanitation, and that's why it's a new fee now. As part of the recommendation, staff has eliminated references to subscription recycling and yard waste fees previously listed in the fee schedule. And like the other topics we've discussed tonight, the options are to approve the resolution, to approve with amendment, or to postpone the resolution and give staff additional direction. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
What would be the threshold for our revisiting, transporting to Stutzman's? In terms of, you know, if next month it doubles and it's $130, $120, or whatever, what's the threshold for having this conversation again about, you know, in terms of hauling it to Stutzman's, and also in terms of the types of recycling materials that we're collecting, and how to maximize what we can, what we do get recycled?
I mean, throughout our conversations over the past several months, we've talked about this at length, and I really think we need to, we probably will need to come see you again, and give you some ideas and options. Now, when we started looking at the other MRFs, I had really hoped that we would have been able to work something out with one of those other MRFs, one in particular that's pretty evident in your packet who I'm referring to. Unfortunately, it wasn't, it wasn't because of the material, because our material consistently, from every MRF, tells us it's the cleanest stuff we get. So, it's not that. It's not the price, and it's not necessarily the mileage, because the mileage that we actually contribute to the cost of the program is extremely minimal. If I remember correctly, well, it's in the chart, is $4,800 annually, so in terms of fuel cost. What it really comes down to is being able to schedule, and for them to be able to accept our material, you know, in a way that meets our requirements. We, as I mentioned earlier, see a 22, right now, about a 22% increase in tonnage, and a slightly higher percentage in actual participation from individuals. And I would, I just think we're gonna, we're gonna be revisiting a number of these issues. One of the, one of the requirements for two of the four MRFs that we were discussing was the additional separation of glass. And I have made arrangements with a way to deal with that material, but again, given the other restrictions on when we can take the material, and how we can take it, and those kinds of things, we just weren't able to meet with them, you know, we couldn't come together at this time. I think we're gonna be revisiting this. I wanna continue working with him, and trying to see if we can't maybe expand the number of days that he would be willing to accept our trucks. Is he willing to take more of those trucks? And I'm always interested in trying to look for ways to create additional separation opportunities, when they make sense from a financial standpoint. One of the things that I had mentioned to you is, in order to expand to a fully separated facility, the largest requirement, of course, in addition to manpower, is a facility of the size needed for the amount of material that we would deal with. And, you know, it's roughly three times what we are now. So, I mean, for those reasons, it's, I don't see this as the goalpost. I see this as just, you know, this is the next step we need to take. I think we try to keep that relationship as long as we have, and we will definitely have to revisit with you if, in the near future, or at any time, they decide to raise their rates.
Okay. Any other questions?
How many trips per year do we make to the MRF? Says 535 tons, but I have no idea what fits in a truck.
I'm gonna let Sean check, but if my memory serves, it was 75 trips last year.
75 trips? Okay. The fuel's just a small part of the cost. The full mileage cost on a vehicle like that probably runs, I don't know, $350 a mile, $5 a mile, something like that. So, and you've got a man who drives it that takes at least three hours to do that. How close are we to operating our own MRF at 535 tons?
Nowhere near there. The business plan called for 10,000 tons a year. 10,000 tons of material a year.
So, that option is not realistic for us at this point. That would be a ill-considered move.
And one of the things I had mentioned, you had not yet came on board as a commissioner yet, but one of the things I had mentioned, that's the reason that you see MRFs combining, you know, companies selling to one another, and you almost see regional MRFs being established, because of the amount of material that's necessary, unless you're in an urban center where, you know, you have an excess of material. But in our situation, it's not likely that it would ever be feasible to create a MRF ourselves. Now, that is not to say that we couldn't at some time in the future see a facility that separates additional materials.
Sure. Any other questions? Okay, public comment?
He's curious, or been wondering. At one time, we processed over 1,000 tons a year on Fourth Street, which has considerable limitations, like no yard space. Nobody else has a recycling center two blocks from the center of downtown, but we did for obvious reasons at the time when we set it up. So, and a lot of our space was not used for processing material, but of course, we had it separated, which is a large part of the reason that Salina's, what comes out of your mix is as good as it is, is because we worked with people for, we started in 1992, taking drop-off, so it just grew from there. So, anyway, yeah, a separated facility, which is, for every possible reason, how you do it, for quality, there's no question. It's the only way to do it for quality. So, anyway, it's, and it's doable, again. We look like we'll have enough room. I have a concept that's actually been used. It wasn't my idea. Twenty-seven years ago, I went to Kitty Hawk, North Carolina, a little town, was using it there. And what we're doing now is very similar to what we were doing, a little improved on Fourth Street. But I think we've got room to install more equipment. We'll be able to take everything we took before. By the way, the only reason the city truck didn't pick up corrugated is there were only so many slots available, and there wasn't a separate slot for corrugated. It's also very bulky, so on the, if you saw the truck, it has some real pluses, but it has some real drawbacks as well. But anyway, if we can get geared around, and there is a real problem getting good people to do recycling, a lot of good people talk about it, and point the finger, but as far as rolling up their sleeves, it is very difficult. Especially if you're not able to pay premium wages, which with our not charging and not having any other revenue stream than selling the material. We operated all those years, some years in profit, but overall, we lost about $50,000 a year. But we could run 1,000 tons through for a loss of $50,000, and have quality material, the best, which is why we were able to sell in down markets, because the brokers and the mills knew, hey, take their stuff. It's the best, and we don't have to pay anything for it, because the markets are down. So, anyway, that gives you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back up here for comments from the commission. Okay, if not, I accept a motion.
Mayor Hoppick, I move we approve Resolution Number 20-7808 for the adjustment of remaining sanitation fees, as shown in the table herein, and adjusting the SDRC fee to $1.25 a month effective as of the first billing cycle, beginning April 1, 2020.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7808. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Does anybody want a break or anything? You wanna keep going?
Would you like a break?
Well, he's the one who's gonna see us in his dreams tonight, it's up to him.
I'm okay.
We're okay? We'll keep going then. Okay. Okay, we'll move into 7.6.
Item 7.6, sanitation trucks and carts, 7.6A, Resolution Number 20-7818, providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay for six fully automated refuse trucks, and authorization to publish the notice of intent. 7.6B is Resolution Number 20-7806, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement to purchase six fully automated refuse trucks. 7.6C is Resolution Number 20-7807, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement to purchase new 95-gallon refuse carts.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this item, several items before you is to consider three resolutions, 20-7818, 7806, and 7807. All of these topics were discussed in the recent study session on February 10, to a limited degree, though I have to say, the issuance of GO bonds, that was discussed the least, I guess. We've included the timeline, the commission took action related to automation and recycling going back to 2013, that's included in your packet. I would say, over the last two years, the commission has defined what the, currently what the new sanitation system would look like, as Commissioner Hodges had mentioned, four automated refuse collection routes, one semi-automated alley collection route, and with no yard waste or curbside recycling. On October 28, 2019, the commission authorized the advertisement of fully automated side-load trucks and carts. On January 10 of this year, we opened bids. We had eight bids from three vendors on automated trucks. A summary of the bids is included in your packet, and it's important for me to say that none of the trucks fully met all specifications. It's also important for me to say that the contract language and the request for bids do have, do provide commissioners with the necessary discretion to authorize variances, and to still award the bids. Regarding the, what would be considered the low bid from Downing Sales was not considered adequate, because they did not include on one truck scales, they had insufficient Packer capacity, compaction rate, engine size, transmission size, collection arm size, number of tailgate cylinders, lifting capacity, and warranty. The Elliott bid for the Mack LCR64 with MRide and New Way Sidewinder Packer bodies did not include fuel tank heaters, which I would point out, we currently do not have on our current fleet, power locks, and vinyl seats. Staff considers these items to be convenience items that do not affect the ability of the truck to meet the city's needs as specified. We are recommending approval of Resolution 20-7806 to award to Elliott Equipment Company in the amount of $1,553,584, with a trade-in value of $131,000 for the purchase of trucks. The purchase of trucks is to be financed using general obligation bonds. Issuance of the bonds requires a 30-day protest period, and that requires 5% of qualified electors, which if submitted, would require an election, or an alternate source of funding. Staff is recommending approval of 20-7818, providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay for the trucks. Regarding the carts, staff received five bids from vendors, and the basis of award for the number of new carts was based on 18,800 cart, new carts, and the collection of 22,000 old carts. The bids were on a per-cart basis, and the actual number will be determined by customer survey that will be performed by the winning vendor. Staff eliminated the carts, the cart bids by Auto Environmental Systems North America Incorporated, because they did not meet specifications. The bid by Toder LLC did not include a bid for the recycling of old carts, and therefore cannot be considered for the award, based on the guidance that we received on, in the study session from commissioners, that we would like to recycle the old carts. Therefore, the lowest and best bid for the combination of features selected by commissioners was Schaefer Systems International Incorporated, at a new cart price of $46.77, $46.77, and a collection of old carts with a per-cart collection price of $6.99 per cart, for a total amount of $1,033,056. Staff further requests authorization for a 10% contingency, in the amount of $103,305.60, to allow for the potential of additional carts needed, based on the survey, based on the number of second carts that customers may choose. That would bring the total to $1,136,361.60. Staff also recommends to commissioners that you authorize the use of the sanitation fund to pay the balance for these carts. The fund balance at the end of 2019 was $1,728,999, with a The fund balance at the end of 2019 was $1,728,999 with a recommended target balance of $500,000. This saves the finance cost and allows us not to increase comprehensive fees in 2021, subject to any inflationary requirements that might be necessary. Recommend approval, staff recommends approval of Resolution 207807 to Schaefer Systems International Incorporated. It's worth mentioning, delivery of the carts will be coordinated with the delivery of trucks, so we will try to coordinate those actions together. And the options for these three resolutions include approving the resolution, approving the resolution with amendment, postponing decision on the resolution, or denying the resolution. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Probably trivial, but what what material are the seats made out of? They seem to be a big issue for, I mean, it seemed like a relatively small price item for such an expensive truck. I'm just curious, what are the seats made out of?
The the seats are made out of cloth rather than vinyl. We had originally specced vinyl because we did not realize that there were trucks that did not provide vinyl as an option. I will tell you that the truck vendor even offered subsequent to the to the bid to make the seats vinyl. We don't see that as necessary. It is certainly in my error that I made that a mandatory spec item. I allowed for two iterations of review in five weeks to prepare the bids. I would have thought that I would have been contacted, but I mean, I I didn't catch it and I did not think that vinyl would be a difficult option for the seats.
Considering all the stuff you're carrying should be in the in the back. But still, I imagine the stuff you do haul probably stains cloth seats irreversibly. I think they'd throw in vinyl seats for your charge at this price, but.
You know, I I I manage several groups for the city, and I have different leaders who view this topic differently, and I allow each to go about it the way that they choose to go about it. So I will give you an example that streets will put seat covers over cloth seats, and their thought is by buying these seat covers, I then don't have to ever replace the seats through the life of the truck, and I get the value out of them at the end when when it comes to trade. I can tell you that Sean's group says, why would I buy have brand-new seats and then immediately cover them with something? Why don't I just wait until the truck is 10 years old, take the trade-in value and save the the new cost for seats? Or if they wear out in that time, replace the seat, you know, have the seats reupholstered. So I I have a mix of both. I don't know that one is right over the other. I haven't seen a difference in cost to to, you know, make a decision policy kind of thing. So I I think we are perfectly comfortable with cloth seats. If in the at some point in the future Sean were to decide to cover them, he certainly could within his operational budget, and and we would, you know, deal with it that way. The same thing with the other two items. We currently don't have fuel tank heaters in in the trucks now. We thought since we were buying new trucks, it would be a good idea. Again, I had I gotten feedback, I I certainly would have not made that mandatory and would have changed that to preferred and then allowed the dealer to bid how he want. I I will say these are also available on, you know, as part of the aftermarket. If in the future we see a need to have them, we can certainly have them installed within Sean's operational budget. Thank you.
Hey, buddy. Commissioner Frans, Commissioner Horns. Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Do we have any comments from the public?
Hi, I'm Adam Ladd. I'm with Summit Truck Group here in town. I'm actually one of the vendors that supplied you with a chassis quote. I just want to see beyond the questions and concerns that you have, if you have any other questions regarding chassis portions of the bid. Then if there's no questions, some of the comments, I would also like to add on one of the vendors that has put a bid in, may happen to be myself. There's only one that supplies you with an additional option above and beyond that none of the other vendors do on the chassis side. So all new trucks in the commercial side go through multiple updates, computer updates, if you will, throughout the year, whether it's minor for emissions questions or engine calibrations, whatever the case is. There's only one vendor that can remotely program those trucks sitting on their yard and their facility, and that's my Mack chassis. So all the time that a truck has on downtime, bringing it to our shop, having us programmed, being down for a day, coming back to them, having an extra driver run it back and forth, we now eliminate because Mack can see that truck and knows when it needs updates. They got a 1-800, excuse me, 1-800 number they call. They tell it to remote into that truck. It automatically sends the download to the truck, less downtime for those units. On top of that, we also monitor any of the shutdown issues, one of 40-ish codes. If the truck would show up with a engine or emissions-related shutdown, we can now tell, Mack can tell that truck has an issue. We will send them an email and/or a phone call saying, truck 52, whatever the unit number it is, has an issue. We know what the problem is. The parts on it's weighted us, or we have it on the shelf, less downtime for that truck as well. So we know what the problem is. We have the parts coming, and we can get it taken care of. We never want to think about an issue, but we want to make sure that additional help is there if needed. So we offer some additional value to your truck that nobody the other vendors can also offer. So that's some of the things that Mack also would like you to know beyond what you have to consider today. So.
Thank you. Any other comments in the public? Okay, if not, I'll bring it up.
Yeah, one of the reasons that you considered the automated, so-called automated arm is to not run the substantial risk of having a runner become a sandwich. You don't want rear loader trucks in traffic areas, that's for sure. You can go side loader with manual loading, and you'll avoid that problem. The whole approach you're taking, to me, is very simple. It's you're on the right road, you're just going the wrong direction for quality reasons and whatever that we've already gotten into and stood by for decades, that that mixing and then separating is just inherently a lower-quality approach, and it always will be. And if we're going to increase quantity, we've got to increase quality because the low-quality uses for for paper, such as is made in Hutchinson, there's a paperboard plant there, and they can use low-quality paper because they're making cereal box-type materials where they have wide latitude. But for higher-quality paperwork, you need higher-quality inputs and so. And and paper really is is where it's critical. Containers either wash or.
This this is a comment period about the trucks we're purchasing and the and the.
Right, but the type, the style of truck that you're purchasing, you'll be you'll be committed to single stream, to a mixed approach and with all its.
This is trash, not recycling or single.
Well, if things work as they should, you'll see a shift over. The trash volume will drop to where you you won't need four trucks. For one thing, as several commissioners have pointed out, when you recycle decidedly the best you can, you have very little trash. So you're not going to see people putting their trash carts out. If you let them know it's okay not to, you'll see them putting them out, as you mentioned, once a month is all you'd have to put your trash cart out. So your need for trash trucks will plummet, but you'll still own these trucks. And if if you're doing your recycling single stream, you'll just shift them over. I mean, makes perfect sense, but 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 you're locking yourself into that approach when you do this unless you're willing to to spend a lot of additional money down the road to to switch horses. So anyway, that's that's pretty obvious.
Thank you.
Can I just ask Mr. Torch one question? Just out of fairness, I I don't know enough technical information about engines to even formulate a question with a gentleman from Summit. Was his point a consideration in the bidding, or was it a deficiency in the other trucks or just?
It wasn't something that we looked at. We certainly welcome his input because it is an additional feature. We use it on the landfill equipment now. It's a, you know, a technology application that allows them to identify faults possibly before the driver does. It allows code revision to the, you know, to the system if necessary. It certainly, I think, over time helps reduce the cost of maintenance. Did we, we did not spec to have that included. I think primarily because of what the gentleman just said, that he's the only one that offers it, and I don't want to not include all of the other potential bidders because of that thing. It is a added bonus to the city that we have this additional maintenance capability.
I'm sorry, Jim, I'm going to recall you just one more second. I just wanted to touch base. I'd forwarded an email about a small community that was looking at acquiring possibly 100 of our of our carts to recycle for their own use for their city. And I didn't know if you or any staff member had been able to connect with that gentleman or not.
The way the the way the bids were set up, the carts are not our property. They are to be disposed of by the the low bidder. That we most certainly would let them know if they didn't want to return those or or recycle them as they're required to, that another community is interested in reusing them. And of course, reuse would be more than acceptable with us. So once we get awarded, and we would put them in contact with with the community that you're talking about.
Great, thank you.
Jim.
Yeah, we we will absolutely pass that information along to Schaefer. It's a, I I mentioned it in the study session, it's a corporate policy for them to recycle. I'm sure that reuse is as of equal value, and we're happy to pass that information on to the cart company.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Torch, have we, have you put together an education program on this? Because one of the shortfalls we hear about on automated collection is, of course, the container has to be at a particular location, it has to be within reach of the truck, otherwise you've got the driver jumping in and out to move the container. And I've seen it work well in some communities and other communities not so well. You know, people leave their cars parked and so on. And I I think public education is going to be an important part of that transition.
I agree.
So is there is there anything in the works on that? Have you started putting something together? What's our approach going to be?
So since the February 10 study session, I have now drafted the duty description for the E3 Coordinator, Environmental Education and Enforcement Coordinator, that I believe is necessary to run this program. You are absolutely correct that this will only succeed or fail based on the amount of education that we provide to the public and the amount of ongoing enforcement that we invest in the system. I think we can do that with this one position. The next step is, once Jim and Natalie have had a chance to review it, I am sure that they will get with Mike and will take the next step to get that started. I really, and I will also say that I've already budgeted in the 2020 operational budget and and amount that we would apply for that E3 Coordinator to implement a program. So I think the beginning steps are are here. We have, you know, 10 to 12 months to put the program together and begin educating the public, so I think the time is, we're still okay with time. But it is virtually after this meeting, this is the next thing I want to do, is send that email to to Natalie and ask her to move this forward so it gets in front of Mike and we can try to get that position established.
Okay, thanks.
And if that doesn't work, what we did in San Gabriel, California, was habitual offenders got invitations from the police department to make a donation to the city budget.
Maybe it was in here and I missed it. When do we expect the delivery of the trucks and the the containers?
So it's, the the short answer is it's about a year. The there is there is that thing about the general obligation bonds that could push push back our schedule a little bit. Initially, we intended on starting January of 2021 with the new system, but depending on how the that protest period lays out, that obviously, I think, pushes back truck production. And I don't know if, I mean, the the best I can tell you right now is we're anticipating about a year. And the reason the reason for that, it doesn't take that long to build those trucks, the there's the chassis and there's the packer, but you also have, we are buying six trucks. And I don't know, but I would guess that some of the large national waste companies buy them either in the hundreds or thousands at a time. So while we feel that we are a big and important part of the system, we're actually, you know, only purchasing six trucks, and we're going to get a build slot, and and it'll probably be about a year.
And to Mr. Ritz's assertion earlier about going with the the sidearm versus the, does this specific design commit us if we were to use it for recycling? Does it commit us to single-stream collection using this type of a mechanism?
Well, I I think what he's saying is because we're, if if we were to use these trucks for.
And these kinds of carts.
Curbside collection.
Right.
We would be collecting all of the material together.
Right, okay.
I I beg to challenge part of what he said in only in that, because I I certainly understand fully separated recyclables. I I understand why some people do it. I also understand why many people don't do it. What we, the only thing we are talking about is, and the question that's different, is transportation, because we're transporting it to a place that still separates it. And in my mind, I would rather sell to Sunoco, who is in North Hutch, who makes low-quality products, but it's it's a regional, local thing, and we're not transporting materials to another port or shipping it somewhere else. I I'm not saying what he's saying is wrong. He, I I agree with what he's saying regarding fully separated recyclables, but the the solution that we have is that that product, regardless of quality, that I can tell you the product that we bring them is clean and the product is going to a regional.
Yeah.
Manufacturer of paper goods.
No, yeah, and I think basically my question was with, I mean, because you've got the two different mechanisms for fully automated sanitation trucks.
Right.
And, you know, if you've got the sidearm, does that allow you to to use that type of vehicle for if we were to ever go to a separated method? Could we do that using these trucks here? Or would this, does this mechanism on this particular truck commit us to a single, single-stream recycling?
The mechanism.
I was just curious.
Yeah, the the mechanism simply picks up the can and and puts it into the back of the packer body. You could limit what is allowed to be in that.
Okay.
Container, and you could control it that way.
I'm sorry, yeah, I thought I thought Mr. Ritz was alluding to like the rear arm versus the the sidearm, or maybe I maybe I had that.
Well, in regard to that question, in regard to that question, we're in 100% agreement that collecting from the back of the truck is inherently more dangerous than collecting from the curb.
Okay.
That's, and we we agree with that. Regarding the 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 products about recycling, the only thing I can refer to is the business plan that did suggest these particular trucks, and they do recommend the model that is adopted throughout the country, which is single stream. Now, that is not to say that there aren't major conversations going on within the industry, given all of the things that have happened to the markets. given all of the things that have happened to the markets. I don't believe the downturn in the markets years ago is equivalent to what we see today because the, the problem that we see today and the downturn that's created today is, is now made all of these products our problem. Before downturns just meant that it was another country's problem, but now it's brought it back home. So, yeah, that's, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. No, Mr. Ritz, no, we've, no, no, thank you. Okay. Okay, well, anyway, do we, we have it up here in front of the commission? Do we have any other comments?
It's a small one. If you're doing all three of these, I'm not going, we're going to do them separately. The carts are going to be black. Are they going to be hard to see early in the morning, late in the afternoon, or if it's poor visibility?
I, I am not aware of any community that's had problems with black carts. Our current replacement carts, because our old cart company went out of business, the carts that we're currently replacing with are black on black. I don't know if you've noticed them. They, I would hope we don't have cars driving over the curb or anything. And the carts, unless we develop an ordinance that puts the cart in the road, that, that some communities do adopt, they put it in front of the curb. I don't know that I would suggest that for, for our community. I think there's, using a corner edge of a driveway would be a, probably the best approach for most houses. And for those that didn't, one of the reasons that we specified the truck we did is because it has a 12-foot reach so that it can reach above and beyond the curb and grab the cart. I've said it before and I'll say it again, we're trading problems. We have a lot of problems with the current system, style of truck, worker safety and those kinds of things. And there are challenges that go along with automated service. I think, I think the cart color is a, is a standard color, and I'm not aware of anyone indicating that there was an issue with having black carts.
And the driver drives on the right-hand side of the?
These particular trucks, the driver can drive on either side of the truck. There'll be a seated platform on both sides of the truck. Because we're now, rather than, you know, instead of going down one side with two workers going this way, we're now driving the routes in both directions, so.
Okay. Do I have?
Motion, Mayor? Mayor Hoppick, I move we approve Resolution Number 207818, providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city of Salina to pay for automated refuse trucks and authorize staff to publish Notice 710.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7818. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0.
Mayor Hoppick, I move we approve Resolution Number 207806, rejecting the bids from Downing Sales and Service as they are considered non-responsive and authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement to purchase six fully automated refuse trucks from Elliott Equipment Company for a total price of $1,553,584.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20-7806. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That also passes 5-0.
Mayor Hoppick, I move we approve Resolution Number 207807, rejecting the bids from Todd LLC for not bidding to recycle the existing carts, rejecting the bids from Auto Environmental Systems, North America Inc. for not meeting the specifications and authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Schaefer Systems International Inc. to purchase and deliver approximately 18,800 refuse carts at a total cost of $46.77, collect and recycle approximately 22,000 existing carts at the unit, unit price of $699 for a total of $1,033,056 with a 10% contingency of $103,356. Total authorization for $1,136,361.60. The number of new carts purchased and old carts collected may be adjusted higher or lower to account for the actual number of carts determined in the customer survey.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20-7807. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That also passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Is that offer for a five-minute break stolen too?
Yeah, why don't we, we'll come back here, let's say, let's make it, you want to make it 705?
705.
Let's make it 705. We are ready for item number 7.7.
Item 7.7, Resolution Number 20-7819, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Saline County, addressing the prisoner housing, emergency dispatch and related services.
You're going to do this or Jacob?
Yeah, Jacob covered for me while I was gone last week, and he did a great job, and I certainly appreciate it. But I'll try to take him off the hook on this report. So, the item before you is renewing our agreement with Saline County about services that we mutually provide to each other. Saline County provides prisoner housing services, and we provide emergency dispatch and, and evidence and contraband storage and inventory. And so, I went back and looked at some of our agreement, past agreements. I may have my dates off, but it looks like dating back to about 1994, we started with a self-renewing agreement between the county and the city. And at the time, the fees were based on a, an annual audit that was conducted to assess the prisoner count and, and costs associated with that. So, that model was filed for, for a number of years. And then in 2010, it looks like we went to three-year agreements that were renewed on a three-year basis. And then in 20, I believe 2012, from what I can tell, we transitioned to, rather than hiring a consultant to conduct an annual study or an annual audit, we started applying a Consumer Price Index increase to the base rate and then just increasing it by the CPI annually. So, that three-year cycle put us to an expiration of December 31 of 2019. And we came to you then, last year, at December 16, acknowledging the fact that it was up for expiration or renewal. We needed some time to renew it. Both the city and the county extended that through the end of February. Staff's been in, in contact with them. Each other, they're working through this proposed approach. And the other thing that I would tell you is the municipal court has implemented some, some measures that they think have, have made noticeable improvement in terms of municipal prisoner days and could have reduced our prisoner count. And so, we wanted to try to take that into account in some way. And in speaking with the county, what we came up with was to go ahead and renew and add one section that built in kind of a CPI review process. Rather than bringing out an outside auditor, we want to put together a staff working group, and that's the, the language that's been inserted into the agreement and inserted into the blue sheet as well. So, the intent is to go ahead and renew through the end of next year, and in the intervening time, have this working group convene that's going to do some data evaluation and try to look at our activity and our volumes and, and costs and revisit that number. Admittedly, the county's also kind of focused on their jail project at the moment, so they recognize they've got quite a few fish to fry at the moment. But it's essentially a renewal as previously provided with a, with a CPI increase and this provision for joint review of cost and prisoner count in the intervening time so that by the time we, we're up for renewal at the end of next year, we'll have, have our data collected, have our analysis concluded, and you can revisit either whether that's a new baseline and we apply CPI from that point forward, or whether we think we have a whole nother methodology that we need to consider, so.
You say next year, you mean 2021.
Correct.
21, okay.
Yep, so this would extend through the end of that, of 2021, with the intention of doing data gathering between July of 2020 and June 30 of 2021. Give us enough time to then look at that, negotiate a contract before expiration in 2021. So, the, Jacob's also provided you a, a cost comparison of what the costs have done applying that CPI number. And there is a cost we pay for prisoner housing, and then we net out, and we pay for fingerprinting, I'm sorry, and then we net out of that, the value of our dispatch services and our evidence custody, and then have a resulting monthly fee that we pay the county. So, that's it in a nutshell. We're really just trying to renew as is and, and build a new methodology to try to account for what we think we might see in the way of improvement in terms of municipal court and prosecutor's approach to prison, municipal prisoner housing and incarceration. So, and like most others, the options we've identified for you is you could approve the resolution as it's presented, you could propose amendments that you deem appropriate, you could postpone consideration, recognizing that the agreement expires at the end of the month, and, and we would be at the county's mercy a little bit in terms of housing our prisoners if you don't take action in, in some fashion. But I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. Judge Stoss and, and the municipal court clerk have toughed it out this far, so I'd at least want to give them the opportunity to address you if they have anything in particular they want to point out, and they're certainly here to answer any questions you might have.
I would like to commend the staff for developing an approach that is cooperative with the county in trying to figure out a basis for this contract. Even when it was audited, and I forget the name of the auditor, they were out of Texas, it was very difficult to understand exactly what was going on for both the city and the county. So, it's, I, I hope you can find something that's relatively simple and that you can both agree on. Or that we can both agree on, I'm sorry.
The company was Maximus, and, and the audits were incredibly complicated.
Yeah, they, they were literally 150, 200 pages, going through all kinds of cyclical analysis. I don't doubt that they were legitimate in some way, it was just very difficult to understand and to explain to anybody else. So, I really appreciate that approach.
It looks good on the front end, we'll see what we come up with on the back end.
Just one question, I mean, is there any reason that the county provides routine healthcare, but the city gets charged for the emergency care?
Yeah, there's statutory provisions that relate to kind of those obligations, and it really becomes a custody issue of whose prisoner they are, depending on whether they're in, in the jail, needing routine treatment, that's their obligation, emergency, or if they need treatment in advance of being incarcerated, that's on our, our tab, and it's just kind of how the, the system is set up.
I won't try to fight it, I'll just try to understand it.
It's a little fatalistic on my part, but, and there are some statutory provisions that spell what their obligations are.
Any more questions, any comments from the public? Or anybody want to? Okay, okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we approve Resolution Number 20-7819, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Saline County addressing prisoner housing, emergency dispatch and related service.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7819. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Okay, that moves us into development business, 8.1.
Item 8.1, Application Number Z19-11, requesting a change in zoning district classification from A1 agricultural to R1 single-family residential on a 9.28, 9.82 acre tract of land located on the north side of Cedar Ridge Drive between Grand Prairie Edition and the Briargate Edition south of the Salina Municipal Golf Course. 8.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 20-11028.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an application that's been filed by Lee Hayworth Construction Company Incorporated, and they are requesting that a 9.82 acre tract of land that is still zoned agricultural be rezoned to R1 for single-family residential development. And way back in 1988, there was a master plan for 136 acres that was developed by the Graves Trust. It was known as the Mariposa Master Plan. And at that time, the Graves Family Trust owned all the property within the master plan area. And the main aspects of that plan, it called for the closure of Cloud Street that ran along the north side of the Elks Club, and construction of a new realigned collector's street connecting Marymount Road and Markley Road with residential development occurring north and south of the new street. That new street was originally called Mariposa Drive, and then later, and presently, Cedar Ridge Drive. What occurred in that area was the original master plan envisioned that the Graves Family Trust would develop all of this, 136 acres. And they did develop Phase 1, which is known as the Mariposa Edition, which is in the upper left-hand side there. So, over next to Marymount Road, this is the Mariposa Edition, and that was developed by the Graves Family Trust. And it had a block here for townhomes, here for townhomes, and over here for townhomes. Then what occurred over time is that the Graves Family Trust sold off portions of that area that were developed by different developers. So, the first phase to develop was the Mariposa Edition. If you've driven by the area, this is what's referred to as Block 5. That is a townhome area that is still undeveloped at this time. But the next portion of this area to develop in Phase 2 was the Florida Soul Townhomes and Briargate Edition, and those are located over next to Markley Road. And those were platted in a way that Florida Soul gets its access from Markley Road, and Briargate was connecting to Cloud Street, which later became Cedar Ridge Drive. Phase 3 of the master plan area was the Cedar Ridge Edition, and that was purchased from the Graves Trust by Lee Hayworth Construction in 2003. And Cedar Ridge Edition was platted in 2004. It was at that time that Cloud Street here was eliminated, and a new street connecting from here to here, Cedar Ridge Drive, was constructed. And at that time, there was existing segments of Mariposa Drive and Cloud Street that got renamed so that it was entirely Cedar Ridge Drive. Then the Phase 4, the fourth phase, was the Grand Prairie Edition, which is located on the north side of Cedar Ridge Drive. That property was platted in 2008. And now we are essentially at Phase 5, and we're talking about this undeveloped parcel in this location. That property was purchased by Lee Hayworth Construction from the Graves Family Trust in 2006, except for that Block 5 area. This is the only remaining portion of the master plan area that's still unplatted and undeveloped. And so, the owner, developer, Bob Hayworth, has filed an application requesting the rezoning of this A1 zone land to R1 for the purpose of developing a subdivision for single-family homes. A total of 22 new residential building lots are proposed, all for single-family home construction. This property's never been platted, but it has been annexed into the city since 2003. And the role for you to consider this evening is whether there's adequate infrastructure in place to support development of this property, and whether the R1 zoning being requested by Mr. Hayworth is compatible with the zoning and uses of near, nearby property. We've summarized for you the development standards within the R1 district, and Mr. Hayworth views this 9.2 acre tract of land as a logical extension of the residential development that has already occurred along Cedar Ridge Drive between Marymount and Markley, including the Cedar Ridge Edition across the street, which Mr. Hayworth developed. Based on the physical characteristics of the site, it's prox- Based on the physical characteristics of the site, its proximity to the golf course, its frontage on Cedar Ridge Drive and its proximity to existing public water and sewer service, the applicant believes this property is suitable for single-family home zoning and future development. If we look and we have looked at the corridor from Marymount to Markley or in reverse order from Markley to Marymount, you have Valley View Estates, you have Valley View, you have Briargate, you have this piece here, you have Cedar Ridge, you have Grand Prairie and Mariposa. And staff believes that the construction of single-family homes at this density would be a logical extension of the development pattern we've already seen along Cedar Ridge Drive. The comprehensive plan shows this as, this corridor as suburban residential land use area and we've pointed out that surrounding subdivisions are zoned R1 and PDD R1 and also R, single-family respectively. So, the zoning this property to R1 would be compatible with those designations. When this Florida Soul development was developed, utilities were stubbed through to the west property line along here and so, there's the ability to extend utilities from Florida Soul into this area and there's also existing water line in Cedar Ridge Drive. Dustin had up there before, a preliminary plat layout, the planning commission approved that preliminary plat layout. The city engineer will be continuing to work with the applicant's design engineer to work out additional details of the stormwater detention design prior to consideration of a final plat. But as you can see on the preliminary plat, there is a stormwater detention area located in that northwest corner. Cedar Ridge Drive is a collector street and it's been improved to city street standards, but only on the western portion of this subdivision, not the eastern portion. So, the applicant will have the option of either improving the remaining portion of Cedar Ridge Drive as part of this development or making a request to the commission about allowing Cedar Ridge Drive to be developed in an interim condition. So you can see right here is a transition from the new section with curb and gutter and sidewalk, this is the old county road section here that used to be Cloud Street and so, all of this from here on is improved to city street standards. This portion here would either need to be improved as part of development of the subdivision or Mr. Hayworth would have to request that the city commission allow it to be developed in an interim condition. We've noted that the requested R1 zoning and the 2.3 units per acre density is consistent with suburban residential land use. And on February 4, 2020, the planning commission conducted a public hearing. Those minutes are attached. At that meeting, staff and the applicant's design engineer explained that the original Mariposa master plan drainage concept was to have a lower dam and a detention pond and an upper dam and a detention pond, but that the applicant in this case is proposing to construct a third detention basin. So, the original master plan, there was a dam here and a detention basin, there was a second dam here and a detention basin and no additional detention area, but in this case, the applicant and their design engineers proposing to construct a third detention basin. This will not reduce or eliminate the volume of stormwater that reaches the lower pond, the Mariposa detention pond, but it will reduce the rate of flow and spread the flow over an extended period of time. So, the planning commission voted 7 to 0 to recommend approval of the applicant's request for R1 zoning, subject to satisfactory plating of the property. They provided their reasons that they viewed this as a logical extension of the existing development pattern. There are needed utilities that can be readily extended to this site and R1 zoning would be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. So your options this afternoon would be to concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and approve an ordinance on first reading, rezoning this property to R1. Second reading would not occur until there's a final plat of the property. You could postpone consideration of this item to a future meeting date if you feel additional information is needed to assist you in making a decision. You could return this application to the planning commission if you disagree with their recommendation and provide your reasons for disagreement. Or if there are four votes to take that action this afternoon or this evening, you could vote to deny the application and decline to approve the attached ordinance. As I noted, to overturn the planning commission's recommendation would require four votes to do so. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that you have. We do have the applicant here as well as their design engineer, but if this ordinance is approved on first reading, that will send a message to Mr. Hayworth and his design team to work on the details of a final plat and then that second reading, zoning and the final plat would come back to you at a future date. So with that, I'll be open to any questions about the request.
Questions for Mr. Andrew?
Can you tell us what the average lot size is in the proposed development?
I'm gonna say right in the neighborhood of 11, 12,000 square feet. The, what we pointed out in the report is that the densities next door in Grand Prairie are about 1.8 housing units per acre and Briargate to the east is 2.6 housing units an acre and this is 2.3 units per acre, so the lot sizes here are smaller than Cedar Ridge here to the west and smaller than Grand Prairie, but they're not perfectly rectangular, so I can't...
Yeah, it's a little hard to tell. That was my challenge.
I was, I am, they're in the 10,000 to 12,000 range, whereas many of the lots in Grand Prairie and Cedar Ridge are larger than that. They're slightly larger than the lots here in Briargate.
Okay, any other questions?
Public comment? Does the applicant wish to make any? You sat here this long, you might as well come up and say something.
Let everybody know you're still here.
Yeah.
My name's Bob Hayworth, live at 913 Twin Oaks Drive. I'm the owner of Lee Hayworth Construction. I'd like you to go ahead and consider this for zoning change. I think this is kind of a given in my mind because of what the surrounding properties are, that this is the best use for that area. And I am actually going to look, while it's a little bit smaller lots, I'm looking for a little bit smaller houses and trying to get something for people today that want to have a nice, smaller square footage home to live in and a nice development.
And you're planning on doing this in two phases, it looked like?
Possibly.
Possibly.
I might do it in one also.
Okay. I just saw that it was divided into two.
Right.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Hoppick, approval of the first reading. Ordinance 20-11028, application Z19, so I want to make sure I'm reading. You said the same thing. Application Z19-11, requesting a change in zoning district classification from A1 agricultural to R1 single-family residential on a 9.2 acre tract of land located on the north side of Cedar Ridge Drive between Grand Prairie Edition and the Briargate Edition south of the Salina Municipal Golf Course.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 20-11028. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, that leads us to other business. Does anyone have anything to bring before the commission?
Mine are real short.
Okay.
There's some giant potholes on the Magnolia Overpass, over 135. If you're west and driving east, I think it's a little worse than going the other direction, but they're big and there's some bigger ones on the edge of the mall, not that that's new, but it's getting worse. I don't know what...
It is pothole season, but we'll identify them and contact the responsible parties. I think the overpass is KDOT and then depending on where the others are, it'll be the mall.
I would concur, there are some, just at where you exit, where you intersect with Magnolia from northbound I-35 and turn onto Magnolia, it's, there's a big one there that is problematic.
Okay, Jim's got his pen out.
That was it? Yeah, it was simple.
Well, interesting, it's kind of a road night here after the commission. I wanted to thank, Chief Nelson isn't here anymore, but wanted to thank him for responding to some questions that I had regarding people parking in the center lanes downtown. I understood it when Smokey Hill had their vehicles that they needed to park their big pieces of equipment, but now it appears that maybe it has moved into a new phase, which is assuming that if you're working downtown or if you're just gonna be a minute, you can leave your car and go run your errands. And that's not the case. So, at any rate, I thank him for, and to Lauren as well, for confirming that and hopefully we'll all be good neighbors downtown.
Growing up in rural Iowa, there are communities that intentionally park...
I know. Yeah, my mom's hometown.
So, to clarify the point, can delivery vehicles park in that area to deliver goods? Like you see, not point fingers, but Dollar General is the one you see.
Yeah, that's what it was designed, yeah, that was one of the...
I think some of the construction workers working on some of the buildings have been parking there.
Exactly, exactly.
I think that's what they're supposed to be doing.
Correct, correct. I mean, I get it if they've got their hazards on and they're unloading materials or what have you, but yeah, my informal survey showed that it was the same trucks there parked for hours and hours every day, so, thanks.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, thank you everyone.